All right. So. Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and start our regular meeting here for the Board, County Board of Supervisors, November 18th. As customary, we'll start off with the moment of silence and Brad, or Vice Chair Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, I wanted to offer a moment of silence for Jed Steele, who was an integral part of Lake County's past, present, and future. Jed's pioneering roots in Lake County winemaking sprawl across the North Coast wine region and span five decades. Jed began his winemaking career working in the cellar at Stony Hill Winery in Napa Valley before obtaining his master's degree in enology from UC Davis in 1974. He spent the next eight years as a winemaker and vineyard manager at Ed Mead's Winery in Mendocino County's Anderson Valley before a phone call altered the course of his life and career, leading him to Lake County. Soon Jed set off an adventure that is still unfolding. He was heavily involved as Kendall Jackson bloomed over the first nine years of its existence. Kendall Jackson Chardonnay became a favorite of then First Lady Nancy Reagan, who insisted on it being served at the White House. Word of her preference for the Kendall Jackson Chardonnay got around when Pulitzer Prize-winning San Francisco Chronicle columnist Herb Kahn wrote a piece in which he referred to the Chardonnay as Nancy's wine. But as Kendall Jackson's size grew in proportion to its fortunes, Jed shafted at the shift towards a more corporate environment. Going to board meetings and having to wear a tie all the time didn't sit comfortably with him. After nine years with Kendall Jackson, Jed decided to strike out on his own. He considered Napa, Sonoma, and Mendocino, but realized he was already where he wanted to be here in Lake County. He leased the Lower Lake Winery, and Steel Wines was launched in 1991. Five years later, he purchased the former Conocti Winery facility and moved production to Kelseyville. Over the years, he has been an integral player in the region's winemaking. When Jed began planting for his own winery Bordeaux and Rhone varieties were instant winners, and they continue to be successful. Seventy percent of the grapes his winery used were harvested in Lake County. Jed said it was a really good place to grow grapes. The soils were great. The land is still, compared to other counties, relatively inexpensive, so it's a great investment for a lot of wineries who tapped out in Napa and Sonoma County. Lake County still remains a location where people can grow good-quality grapes very economically. In addition to inspiring Lake County grape growers, Jed has also influenced and mentored several winemakers in the region. He continued, he continues to receive accolades and provides a benchmark for the ever-increasing quality of Lake County wines. In these and many other ways, Jed embodies the past, present, and future of Lake County winemaking, and that information I wanted to mention was, was written up by the Lake County Wine Grape Commission. Thank you.
And I have one as well. I have one for Angela Eileen Ramos of Nice. Angela passed away November 8th, 2025 with her beloved husband and family by her side. Angela was born May 12th, 1954 in Wyrika, California, to Lester Lee Alfred Senior and Elde Louise Hall. Angela survived by her husband of 55 years, Richard Ramos, children Richard Gennaro Ramos, Consuelo Ramos, grandchildren Jackie Cardona, Jake Pickens, Jocelyn Pickens, Natasha Haskell Cummings, Rachel Haskell, Travis Ramos, and Gennaro Ramos, great-grandchildren Leonardo Cardona and Mariana Cardona, siblings Kathy Lozana, Gary Alford, and Terry Alford, and Gregory Alford. The memorial, the memorial service was held actually Friday, November 14th, but wasn't in time for me to do this moment of silence last week, so I'm bringing it forward today. We offer our condolences. Supervisor Pisca, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. It looks like we don't have any. And we'll move on to consent agenda items, and it looks like we're going to pull 5.8 and 5.14. Is 5.9 accurate? Okay, and 5.9, but that will be moved to the ninth. Are there any others the Board would like to pull? I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone in the public that would like to pull consent agenda item. All right. I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as proposed with the exception of 5.8, 5.9, and 5.14.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and we will be taking 5.14 up at 9:15. All right. Next, we have our timed items, our public input. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on Zoom? Oh, we have somebody.
Good morning, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen, and Supervisors, Margot Cambara. Not all national news is bad news. On Sunday, NPR, National Public Radio, aired a positive message about and from Lake County. Refreshingly, the story didn't focus on disaster, loss, or victims. The NPR story spoke of Lake County's lessons learned from its wildfire experience, proactive measures to reduce wildfire risk, and addressing the homeowner insurance crisis. The story highlighted the strategy of community-wide wildfire risk reduction. The NPR reporter included Supervisor Pisca's comments on the actions taken by the county. The insurance industry has yet to recognize efforts of communities to reduce high-hazard risk such as wildfire. While the insurance crisis hasn't been resolved, it's encouraging for the county to receive national attention for its proactive measures to reduce wildfire risk on a community-wide scale. Thank you, Board, for your support of wildfire risk reduction, and special thanks to Supervisor Pisca for her leadership on this topic. For your reference, I'll upload the link to the NPR story as an e-comment under today's public comment agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. And you said there's someone on Zoom? All right, if you can unmute.
All right. Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Sterling Wellman. I'm here today because Spring Valley has a serious safety problem, and the county needs to take action. We have over 1,000 residents in Spring Valley, and we all depend on one single road to get in and out New Long Valley Road. Everyone in this room knows this is not safe for a high wildfire-risk community. I want to make something crystal clear. We do not need to prove that a bridge ever existed on Old Long Valley Road. Safety law does not depend on old maps, old paperwork, or guessing what used to be there. The law focuses on protecting lives today. Under California state minimum fire safe regulations, the rules are very clear. Roads must allow two-way traffic so people can evacuate while firefighters enter. Roads and bridges must support heavy equipment up to 4,000 to 75,000 pounds. Large communities are not allowed to rely on long dead-end roads with no second exit. Communities must have more than one way out during an emergency. Cal, California Fire Code reinforces this, and it states that in high-risk areas, fire authorities can require two separate and approved access roads for the safety of the residents. Right now, Spring Valley is one blocked road away from a major tragedy. A crash, a fallen tree, flooding, a medical emergency blocking the road, any of these can trap the entire community. Over 1,000 people can be stuck with no alternative route for evacuation or emergency response. This is not speculation. This is real and ongoing danger, and the county already acknowledges this problem. Its own planning documents, the project is listed as a priority. Bridge on Old Long Valley Road engraved the road. It is written down, but is not moved forward. The safety standards are clear. The bridge is not an optional. It is a requirement. A community of this size cannot rely on a single-access road. This violates the intent of the state fire safety regulations, the California Fire Code, and basic public safety principles. Again, we do not need to prove an old bridge was there. We need a bridge because lives depend on having a second way out. We need a bridge because the law requires safe evacuation routes. We need a bridge because it is the only responsible action for this community. I am asking the Board to advance this project now, begin the planning, and begin the engineering, and make Old Long Valley Road Bridge a top life safety priority for Spring Valley. We need the second evacuation route because something preventable becomes irreversible. And I just want to bring up the fact that we've already had, I think in 17, the New Long Valley blew out. We had three days of being stuck in our leave before they could put the Bailey Bridge in. We've had a car accident where it blocked the road, and luckily that the car's fuel that was leaking didn't catch fire. And we also had a big rig fuel tank blow up on the road and block the road, and thank God it was November and it just, okay, thank you.
Thank you. iPhone 14, if you can unmute.
Sky LeWaw, Hillsbury Family Farms. What we are witnessing in community development is no longer poor management. It is a pattern of misconduct, misuse of public resources, and a complete disregard for state law. Recently, it was discovered that Director Turner attended a swearing-in ceremony for a local defense attorney. This ceremony took place one floor above her office inside the same county building while she was wearing her county official badge, meaning she was most certainly using taxpayer-funded time to attend a personal event. Under Government Code 8314, using public resources include paid working hours for personal purposes is unlawful. Under Penal Code 424, a public officer who uses public money, time, resources for any purpose that is not authorized by this Board or law can be guilty of misappropriation of public funds and punishable by fines and imprisonment and disqualification from public office. This is serious. For three and a half years, Director Turner poured enormous time and energy into going after the smallest cannabis farm in Lake County while failing to complete the ordinances the state of California has asked this county to finish. She has misused task force meetings, and she has issued unreasonable and inconsistent demands. Now we see her using public time to attend a personal defense with a defense attorney's law office, creating the appearance of ex parte communication, which is outside of the legal profession that has nothing to do with her department's work. So my question to this Board is simple. How much longer will you continue to tolerate a director who misuses public resources, disregards state law, targets small farmers, and uses the sheriff's office to avoid accountability and continues to damage public trust? Why are these complaints not being taken seriously, and why are constituents watching a director violate standards of conduct, and yet the director receives congratulations, protection, and qualified immunity from this Board? Right now, by allowing this behavior to continue, this Board is cultivating a corrupt government environment, and this Board needs to take immediate action. You need to order an independent review of her time, conduct, and compliance with state law. Hold the leadership to the same standards that you expect from the public and your constituents. Restoring integrity to this department is important because we deserve a county that is accountable and transparent, not a county that is ran by personal friendships, retaliation, and the misuse of taxpayer resources. Muleha.
Are there any other public input comments? I'm going to close public input at this time and move on to our next item on the agenda.
I think our next item just left.
Well. Yeah, it's possible. Go ahead and close public input at this time. At 6.2, our Pet of the Week. All right.
Hi. I'm Officer Reel, Reel with Lake County Animal Care and Control, and this is Amor. She is a one-year-old husky mix, found obviously here in the county. She's low to high energy, as you can see. She has patience to a point. She loves adventure and is an absolute love. So if you're interested in adopting her, I do believe we still have free adoptions through a grant up at the shelter, which is located at 4949 Howard Drive in Lakeport.
All right. We'll move on to 6.3, our 9:05 Presentation of Proclamation, recognizing November 17th through November 21st, 2025 as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. We as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week.
It's all about you.
I know. We did it.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Recognizing November seventeenth through twenty-first as twenty twenty-five as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week, whereas California counties provide many services that are essential to the lives of Californians. And whereas the position of the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, Board plays an integral role in the function of California County Government, and whereas the Clerk of the Board performs many legal mandated functions that protect and preserve the rights of the citizens to an open and accessible government. And whereas the work performed by the Clerk of the Board is a time-honored and vital part of local government, and whereas the clerk's duties of record-keeping is revered, their work among the earliest recorded on behalf of the public and clerks have long pledged to maintain their neutrality and impartiality of the proceedings of government. And whereas the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Association and affiliation, an affiliate of the California State Association of Counties is organized to promote the principles of good government, to represent the interests of Clerk of the Board with legislative bodies and other professional organizations, to encourage the development of professional growth and education, and to support the objectives of all regional groups established within the association. And whereas is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of clerks of the Board across fifty-eight counties of the state of California. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does herewithin proclaim the week of November seventeenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-five as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week in recognition of high level of services bestowed upon the people of Lake County and the people of California by clerks of the Board, passed and adopted this eighteenth day of November, twenty twenty-five. Johanna, you, you do your work with such a high degree of transparency, which is what we all really appreciate. It's the law, but it builds trust in our community with our constituents and our Board. So thank you for everything that you do.
So Johanna, I apologize, but I don't in a way, because I wanted to make sure you, day in, day out, every week, you keep us in line, you keep me in line. You help me with specific situations when it comes to my town halls and whatnot. And so I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to see us honor you. You know, I know you wouldn't put something like this on for yourself, so.
I'd like to thank EJ for putting it on. Yeah, it's well deserved. You are appreciated.
Thank you for your work.
For once, I want to thank the community, the Board, departments, and everybody in between who helped make the meetings what they are. Everybody shows up because they care about Lake County, and I am grateful to be serving you all.
All right.
We could have our attorney here, we could have our CAO's office here, but nothing can move forward unless you're in that seat. You're an integral part of what we do every single day, and you're probably the most informed person in this entire building as to what is happening in this county. So, thank you. It's wonderful working with you.
All right. Oh, I'll open it up for the public. Go ahead.
Good morning, Board. Mr. Long, I offer congratulations and thanks on behalf of being a member of the public. I truly appreciate your service, your professionalism, your promptness, and you're so helpful. Thank you so much. To an ordinary member of the public, it's bewildering having to deal with county government and the deadlines and the paperwork, but you make it much simpler, easier to transact with the, with our local government. And thank you, and that, that's democracy at our most basic. Thank you so, so much.
Any other public input? Comment, actually. All right, we'll take our pictures. All right. So we're going to take on our five point one four now. Sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, approve Amendment Number Four to the Joint Operating Agreement Southeast Geyser's Affluent Pipeline Project and the Clear Lake Water Supply Agreement and authorize the Chair to sign. And we have Special District Administrator, Robin Boree. Yes, yes, please come up. Thank you for that. Please come on up.
Good morning, Board, community, and staff of Lake County. This is our report about the extension of the Geyser Agreement, known as the SIGEP Agreement. I am Robin Boree, your Special District Director, and I have Jessie here, who is our Finance Deputy Director. And then we have Danielle, Joe, and Jim from our steam partners. On Zoom, there are several other participants, in case we need to call on them. So I'd like to start this off with a brief PowerPoint of how we got here, what this project was about, and then maybe we can do public comment before we go into the Board. So the background of this project is, this has been going on since, actually, distribution of water since nineteen ninety-seven. In the nineteen eighties, years and years ago, our county was growing and we were having trouble sustaining our public infrastructure, particularly related to wastewater. Lake County Special Districts faced disposal issues where we couldn't dispose of the water due to rain or anything like that, so it strained our infrastructure even farther. We, at the same time, the Geyser started experiencing a decrease in the steam that was provided from the Geyser's itself, and eventually they were considered as an option for our wastewater disposal. A series of technical studies, engineering studies, the environmental and legal reviews, followed alongside a much-needed funding stream to fund this one-of-a-kind, first-of-it's-known type of project. The staff were able to include allies such as California Energy Commission and the State Department of Energy, as well as other state and federal partners, to come up with the funding for the first phase of this project. The construction of the SIGEP, which starts at southeast and goes up to the, to the Geyser's, began in nineteen ninety-five, and the delivery of the recycled water actually commenced in nineteen ninety-seven, which is quite a feat to compete, complete such a project in two years. That part of the project originally had twenty-nine miles of pipeline that went cross-country, in roads, and through people's properties. Along, now we have added a length of another forty miles to include the additional nearby communities that delivered approximately eight million gallons of water per day to the Geyser's. The pipeline capacity makeup water from Clear Lake is used to maximize the injection flow or to make up water when we don't have flows to substantiate that amount of water. All the local communities grow over time, and we expect that our recycled water will increase. However, that could or could not replace the makeup water depending on future policy decisions. The geothermal injection system provides long-range capacity for local growth and economic development without the necessity of periodic disposable facility expansions and their environmental disturbances. This is truly a great partnership. We have great teamwork and collaboration. It's economically beneficial to the county. It increases the economic development in the county. It provides Lake County with an environmentally weather-independent affluent disposal solution. It supports local renewable green energy and provides regional grid reliability. Repunishing the Geyser steam fields ensures reliable, clean, renewable energy for generations to come. It saves Lake County Special Districts millions of dollars that we would have to expend if we had to create additional storage capacity and replace all of the previously used sprinkler lines at all three wastewater plants. This recycled water generate, sustains the geothermal production, generating federal royalties that come to Lake County. Dramatically reduced water footprints and saves the taxpayer sewage treatment costs. The agreement suspends delivery from the Clear Lake under drought conditions, so if the lake, if we have drought, then the lake intake is not allowed to be used. So this amendment is extending our partnership for another twenty-five years. It extends the continue, the extension continues to provide Lake County Special Districts with an environmentally friendly, weather-independent disposal solution of affluent from ten Lake County communities, starting from North Lakeport all the way around the lake, picks up Clear Lake Oaks wastewater, goes to southeast wastewater, and then it continues to Middletown and then up to the Golden Flange into the steam fields. The steam suppliers will be paying all of the cost for the makeup water and the main pipeline pumping power, which was previously shared. The increase in the revenue from the steam suppliers will contribute to the North Lakeport capital improvement distribution facilities of a hundred thousand dollars a year. Previously, the district was responsible for all costs associated with North Lakeport. There's also a CPI, so as inflation goes, this amount of funding will continue to increase with inflation. This also continues to allow Clear Lake Oaks allocation to discharge. Previously, there were many spills because they have literally no storage capacity and nowhere else to discharge. That agreement will be coming back to the Board. Now that once this is done, then we can negotiate our continued agreement with Clear Lake Oaks water. This also allows for long-term capital investments from both Lake County Special Districts and from the steam suppliers so that we can plan for future additional wells, additional growth, and other long-term capital costs. The future flow increase expansion and the full circle options are not locked in under this agreement. Those would definitely, if they come to fruition, once the feasibility studies were be done, we would begin negotiations on those and look at all options that best fit the county. Our costs are associated with, all the costs that are associated with the Lake County, with the lake intake structure and the steam suppliers' use of that water is all going to be burdened one hundred percent by the steam suppliers. And I've put together a kind of a side-by-side of what is changing. I know that there's many agreements here and it's very convoluted, so we tried to boil it down as easily as possible. Before, it included all affluent of publicly-owned and operated facilities. So if we grew or anything like that, that was an automatic, that it would go to the steam suppliers. And so now it clearly defines the affluent from the northwest, southeast, and Middletown as it is now. Previously, it was not defined what an emergency actually is, and so we have spelled out exactly what an emergency constitutes. The current term is set to expire in December of twenty twenty-six, and this will extend the term for another twenty-five years. And before, it didn't specify project facilities of the Northwest Regional Wastewater System. So now it clearly defines that what is included, and that's that hundred thousand dollars that they would contribute to the Northwest Regional Wastewater System. Emergency Response Procedures was listed before, and it did not reference the emergency response plans that we all have in place now. And so this just combines both the response procedures and the plans. And it referenced, referenced prior makeup agreement with Yolo County, and there is now, to your Board, a new updated one, and it updates the reference to the new makeup water agreement with Yolo County. Before, it talked about any expense over five thousand dollars needed to go to the JOC, which is the Joint Operating Group, that then we would discuss and determine if that cost was relevant. We've updated that cost to twenty-five thousand dollars due to just the twenty-five years of inflation. The previously shared costs are now going to be burdened by the steam suppliers for the lake intake structure. And previously, we didn't have the hundred thousand dollar annually plus CIP, CPI improvement costs. And so that is my presentation. If you guys have anything you want to add before we open it to public comment?
This is Joe Greco, Chair Crandall. Supervisors, just want to say thank you to the Lake County team working with us to negotiate this agreement. It's been a great ride for the last twenty-plus, twenty-five-plus years. A great partnership. We continue to work together, and the benefits that are provided to both the county, county ratepayers, as well as the benefits that the Geyser's and Calpine seek are quite beneficial. And so it is a win-win. Just want to say thank you to the lake over the, over the years. And if there's any questions as the process continues, please just let me know. Jim, do you have anything to add?
This is Jim Beach, Geothermal Plant Manager for Northern California Power Agency. So again, thank you to the Chair and Supervisors for all the support and to the Lakosan team for all their support. We definitely have to continue to push this forward and continue to pull that rope in the right direction so that we continue this partnership. Thank you.
Good morning. Danielle Matthews-Sparis with Calpine. I echo my colleagues' comments. We're so grateful for the partnership. Robin alluded to the Joint Operators Committee, and I just want to add that we do meet religiously every quarter, and there's been some great strides in partnering up on smaller projects. And I know we're all committed to continuing to do that quarterly meeting, but it is very inspiring that that meeting still continues on a regular basis.
Well, and on, on that note as well, I'd like to add that if something comes up, they're one phone call away, and they're always willing to jump into the fray with us and help us figure out what we need to do to keep the pipeline going and fix anything that happens and work with us. You know, we're looking at other options for solar at some of our plants, and they've indicated that they are willing to give us some technical advice and, and help us in any way to benefit the county.
Chair Crandall, just wanted to add one thing. It's, we believe that the moving forward at this point in time, to echo what Jim was saying, is timely because both NCPA and Calpine and the county need to continue to invest. So as we move forward, the earlier to understand the amendment process and signing that agreement timely is critical to our success on a go-forward basis so we don't run up on a timeline. That is time, that is a critical juncture in terms of timing. So we appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Anything else before I, go ahead Supervisor Piscu?
Well, this is a big day. We've been working on this negotiation for about three years, I think, just so the rest of the Board is aware of what this process has been like. Past County Council Anita Grant reviewed everything for us to support current County Council. Past Special District Administrator worked on this. Robin's been carrying it forward with her staff. This was an incredible amount of documents to work through. It really, really was. So the team with admin, County Council, Special Districts, the Geyser's partners, we met regularly with past Supervisor Simon, Supervisor Owen. There were many fly-ins from your staff and your council. So I just want to let the Board know how hard we worked on this, and I feel really good about what we've brought forward. This relationship is the gold standard of public-private relationships, and this infrastructure has fundamentally changed how we grow in this, in this. and this infrastructure has fundamentally changed how we grow in this, in this county, both publicly and privately. So I, I'm really looking forward to executing this amendment and the next 25 years of this partnership. I do want to disclose, at the big anniversary event we had last month, Supervisor Owen and I were each invited, as were our other state and federal elected partners, to celebrate this relationship, and the cost per guest was about $370. I just want to let everyone know that we were at that event, and we were happy to celebrate with everyone and represent in our official capacity.
Supervisor Owen?
Thank you. And yes, that was a really fun event. It was a huge milestone, 65 years of the geothermal Geysers. And that has been a huge boost to our economy here in Lake County, our geothermal Geysers. I know my family has worked there, NCPA, and I think that this is a great win-win for the county, our community, and the geothermal, to be able to continue the geothermal going and, and have a new place to put our effluent waters. So that is just, it's phenomenal what we've done, or what you have done, actually. And I think I'd also like to thank you for everything you do in the county, for supporting our county as far as the community goes. You guys have done an amazing job. If anybody has not visited the Calpine Center and taken a tour with Ms. Danielle, it, it's a great opportunity. You learn a lot. So I just can't say enough about it, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm just used to seeing public comment if there's anyone that'd like to come up and speak on this item.
Good morning, Chair Crandall and the members of the board. My name's Nicole Flora. I'm the Executive Director of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and as you make your decision this morning, I urge you to keep in mind Calpine's significant economic and social contributions to Lake County. These benefits should be a key factor in your discussions and decision-making process, as mentioned prior to my comment. Calpine is the biggest taxpayer in Lake County. Calpine's taxes pay for our schools, public safety, and other important services that we all use. The Geysers employ 300 full-time workers, and more than 70% of them live in Lake County. These are good jobs that help our neighbors, friends, and families support themselves and their families. Each year, Calpine pays $22 million in geothermal royalties. Over 12 million goes to private landowners, 5 million goes to the State of California, and 6 million goes back to the federal government. Of that federal money, a quarter comes back to Lake and Sonoma Counties. This steady flow of money helps keep our local budget strong and supports things like our roads and infrastructure. Calpine also supports our community by sponsoring events, making donations, and volunteering. I think we've all been at public events where Danielle is willing to spend Calpine's money on our local youth and philanthropic causes. Looking ahead, Calpine is solidifying its long-term partnership with our community by committing to remain here for the next 25 years and, through the proposed amendment, pledging an additional $100,000 each year to Lake County. It's a substantial investment that goes beyond the promises direct, goes beyond symbolism and proposes, promises direct benefits to our residents. This ongoing support not only reinforces Calpine's role in providing good jobs and strengthening our local budget, but also creates a meaningful opportunity for growth, ensuring the company remains part of our community and that the strong partnership continues to build a brighter and more prosperous future. Thank you.
Rob Brown, Kelseyville. So the, the numbers that were just stated, I appreciate that, and I can't really expand on that too much. They're substantial. What I can tell you, and I'll probably run out of time, so you'll have to give me a little, little freedom here, but I'm going to travel back to the 1900s. You know, I, I was able to work with the Geysers back in 1980 originally, and that was the boom. And in the, in the later 1980s, I, I actually met this, this young blond-haired girl who had her own little private, green, old beat-up Chevy pickup that she was using for a pilot car, and we became friends, and we're still friends to this day. You're Supervisor from District 1. So she's very familiar with the Geysers, the boom up there. Then we lived, then we survived through the bust, and that's when the resources started to run out. And there were a lot of us that were affected by that, that were ancillary to the Geysers, but we were hauling gravel, we were working equipment, we were doing all these things. And so we experienced that, and we saw a lot of the dilapidation of homes and cabins on Cobb where people were living up there, and, and there were restaurants up there, there were things that were thriving. Those all left, and, and the schools were, were suffering. Everybody was suffering. Then Steve Brodnansky and Mark Dellinger, back in the later 1990s, started working on this project that Robin talked about, and this thing started coming alive. And it was, by the time I came on the board in 2000, it was already going. Sonoma County was emulating their project that they, they came up with, and the Geysers was a boom again. And fortunately, it has been since. Now, she talked about the employees, you know, the employees that I know about, you know, there are 200 of them roughly that live in Lake County, making, these are really good jobs. These aren't just menial jobs, but there's probably 1,000 or more jobs that go along with that. Restaurants, schools, gas stations, truck drivers, equipment operators, welders, people that don't actually work for Calpine, but they're contractors. We rely on those. There is, there is no business in Lake County that's more dominant and, and has more effect on the local economy than, and I don't mean to leave out NCPA. I say Calpine, but NCPA is, is a huge part of that as well. The $6 million a year, this year, that they paid in property taxes, that was just secured property taxes when 10 years ago, it was 4 million. So there's a 50% increase. If you, if you kick that out 25 years, that's about $17 million in secured, that's just the property taxes. That doesn't include all the royalties that she talked about. It's a tremendous boon. 25 years is not that long, especially when you're 65 years old and you see how fast the last 25 went. And I apologize for that. I just have a couple, a couple more comments. There are people that are going to work for Calpine and NCPA this year that will be able to retire 25, 30 years from now. We need to make sure that they're around to be able to allow for that. These people are, are buying homes, they're making mortgages, 30-year mortgages. 25 years isn't a tremendous amount of time. I, I would give them more if, if you could. But I appreciate the project. The one other thing that I want to add, I know it's not part of this, but I want to encourage it because it's something that, that, you know, we, we got involved with. It was in my district at the time. Now it's Brad's district, but Soda Bay, that whole area for, for the Full Circle Project, you, you allowed for about $350,000 last year, I think, for the feasibility study for the Full Circle Project. It is imperative that you move forward and keep going on that thing because I think that a lot of the problems with the lake and the Soda Bay area is because of the, of the leaching of septic and all these things. You corral that, you get that aimed in the right direction and get it up to the Geysers, like the Basin 2000 project, and you're going to cure a lot of other issues besides supporting really good business. And I could go on and on again about, you know, the, the value of the Geysers partners after the Valley Fire. And I, I honestly feel that most of Cobb and Anderson Springs would not have been rebuilt had it not been for this partnership. So there's a lot of time and, and thoughts that could go into this, but in, in case you're, you're wondering what side of the fence I'm on, I think you should support this.
Any other public comment in the room? Okay, anyone on Zoom? Okay. Please unmute Sarah and... You have muted yourself, so if you can unmute? If you can raise your hand? Did you raise? Okay. With that, I'll close public comment. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I appreciate that we're here. I know there's been a long time in negotiations. Appreciate what Calpine, NCPA, all of the above, has done and plans to continue. So I mean, the answer already is going to be a yes. This is ridiculous to put a pause or a hiccup or even a barrier to continuing what you do. But I do have a problem with this process. This is a 25 years, and I have zero financials to let me know what is our financial liability with the changes that we're making to the amendments. I'm looking at the original 25-year agreement. It has all kinds of financials to let you understand, let us understand what the cost will be, what the share of costs will be, because you just mentioned that there's been inflation over the last 25 years. I can't use those financials from 20, 30 years ago to anticipate what the cost will be today or what the changes that are being made in the amendments. And I think if we're going to sign a 25-year agreement for the next 25 years, we actually need to share what the, the financial liability will be to the county as well as to the, the steamers, I think is what you guys are... Steam suppliers. I was going with the, the train, Thomas the Train. So me, not having any financials in front of us as we approve a 25-year agreement, I would say, can we please postpone this two weeks and come back in December and really look at the numbers? Because they're numbers. There's big numbers behind this. And I'd like to understand, we talk about protecting our ratepayers. Today, we're ignoring our ratepayers and saying we're going to make a deal without knowing what the actual impact might be on the others who are utilizing the systems. And so the answer is yes, I want to get there, but I don't have the information to say yes today other than it feels good. I know it's good, but I can't look and say the data shows me that it's good. Maybe those numbers were provided inside the negotiations, but they're not in front of me. There's only the Fourth Amendment. There's not the original agreement, the Amendment 1, 2, 3. I had to ask for those. I just think it's a very segmented perspective of what we're getting today to get to a yes. We need to get to a yes, but there's missing information to really be able to say for 25 years, this feels good, this feels safe, let's move on, rather than oops, maybe some of the amendments or things that we did is not actually beneficial to the agency versus towards the steam, the steam folks. Calpine, I'll just stick with Calpine, sorry, NCPA. And so again, my answer is, I want to get to a yes. There's no other way to, to do this, but what's in front of us is lacking a lot of information to get to that today.
So I'd like to respond to that. I have Jesse here. We have pulled the financials. We did review them in the negotiations as well, so I will let him chime in on the cost-sharing agreement and how much we've been paying over the past years. We would assume it to be, to continue on at the, the same rate. And then he also has the lake intake numbers.
So I have the financials here for the last... Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have the financials here for the last five years. So just to go over them quickly, last year in fiscal year 2425, the costs associated with the Geysers was $785,000. Of that, the LIPS PG&E meter was $296,000. As mentioned in the amendment, that entirety will be covered by Calpine. And then the rest will be that percentage that's built into the contract. The year before that, fiscal year 2324, the total was $966,000, with the LIPS meter being $158,000 and $211,000 in LIPS and SEPS repairs. A year before that, LIPS was not running quite as much, so total cost was $374,000, with the LIPS meter only being $9,000. We see fluctuations a year before that, $281,000 with the LIPS meter being $33,000. So that was another year with the, we weren't drawing from the lake quite as much. That's why you see the reduced cost for the PG&E meter. And fiscal year 2021, total cost $545,000, with the LIPS meter being $229,000.
And do, and I appreciate that. Do we have a... Because in the original agreement, they talked about the avoided costs for the fact that we don't have to figure out where to go with the 2 billion gallons worth of effluent, rather than where it's going currently, in order to figure out what are we avoiding versus what is the cost that we are currently sharing?
So if we didn't send the effluent through the pipeline up to the steam suppliers, all of, three of the different wastewater facilities would need extensive expansion to the storage as we aren't able to really sprinkle the effluent in the winter months because our permit only allows us to sprinkle five days after a rain. And so during the wintertime, that pretty much killed our ability to dispose of any water. So building additional storage, the environmental of that will take years, and then it would be millions of dollars to build additional reservoirs. It'd be probably close to $1 million to install all the pumps necessary and new sprinkler systems throughout all three plants. And so it's a significant undertaking if we have to pivot and go to another option.
And, and not looking for the option, just again, within the math of what is the part of the cost-sharing was the avoided costs, and it seems we don't have the avoided costs at this moment in time. And I'm just, I'm, I appreciate the fact that Calpine is offering to provide 100,000. I'm, I'm just going to be blunt, and that's a drop in the bucket into a big giant funding that Calpine has. And I'm trying to figure out, where are we? Where we started, and is 100,000 really not helpful for us? Should we be pushing for more? I, I don't know because I don't have the numbers. Again, the answer, the answer is to get to a yes, but I'm also trying to, in a public forum, trying to get information that I don't have access to.
Yeah, so I'd like to reiterate that when he taught, when Jesse was talking about the, the LIPS projects, that's the intake structures, and so the significant cost of that from the previous years is now going to be 100% burdened by the suppliers. We will no longer be sharing in that. So that's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year that the county will be saving.
You, sir, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to reiterate that there's a commitment to continue to do the cost share as the cost share has been occurring on an ongoing basis. So the only thing that the amendment does do is improve by the 100K, improved by the lake structure, intake, and energy. Everything else will remain the same. And as the equipment ages, the burden increases, and therefore, NCPA and Calpine cost share will also increase. That's all I wanted to say.
And I appreciate that, but I also know that we're looking at potentially 30-year-old infrastructure that will probably require a little bit more replacement as time goes on, just because that's the, the way things work. Just real quick about the lake intake, do, does Special Districts use any of that water at all? Or is it solely for the steam field?
It is 100% for the steam field.
So just a random question, why not a... Because the agreement has our name on it, why not just an agreement between Yolo County and Calpine? Why are we involved if we're no longer dealing with the maintenance of it? We're no longer doing, we don't touch any of the water. I'm just wondering why we're in it.
Well, we would, we would continue. Special Districts will continue to operate and maintain that, and then we'll be reimbursed by the steam suppliers. Lloyd, do you want to chime in as to why the agreement is?
And just for clarification, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're referencing the Clear Lake Water Supply Agreement and the divertor schedule? Okay. So that, that water supply agreement, I think one of the provisions that makes it expressly states that it's an amendment and restatement of the 1990, I want to say 1995 agreement that was entered into between Yolo County Flood Control District, might have been paraphrasing there, and Lakosan. And so that's the tie-in there from Lakosan's perspective as to why it's a signatory. Because just generally speaking, in between that 1995 agreement to what's being proposed to your board today, it's in the, what's being proposed to your board... it's in the, what's being proposed to your board today in terms of the water supply agreement is intended to be amongst the parties to be a restatement and amendment to that agreement. But, at the same time, it makes it clear that, as it relates to this proposed water supply agreement, the diverters being referenced here is specifically identified as the steam supplier parties, not Lakosan.
Is there any legal liability for our name being on there, rather than not?
Well, in terms of legal liability, everything that's in place on that 1995 agreement should still be in effect. The indemnification provisions of the, of the proposed Clear Lake Water Supply Agreement are obligations imposed on the diverters. So that's not on Lakosan. It's apparently, it's effectively in recognition of Lakosan being a diverter in the 1995 agreement, but not in this agreement. And I think to the extent, upon reviewing the Clear Lake Water Supply Agreement, the one that's being proposed before your board today, Lakosan's obligations, I believe, only go to the extent, as it relates to just this proposed agreement, to information sharing. Certain information sharing provisions that relates to the diversion of water by the diverters, namely, NCPA and GCP.
And then, the difference between the previous and this one is, last one was a maximum of 7,950 acre feet, and this one is not to exceed 2,000 acre feet per month. Am I correct on, or is it still the same? Because I'm seeing different numbers in different places, and I know that some places it's for drought, some places it's for other, other reasons. Just wanted to check in.
Ellen's got her pen up, so if you can wrap up after this question, please.
So the maximum is the same, 7,950 annually?
Okay.
There is a limit on monthly to a degree, but the, there is no change.
Okay. So it's just two, no, no more than 2,000 per month, but still 7,950 maximum?
Well, it, it can go above that, depending on the certain conditions to get to the 7,950. Depending on, so for example, if there's a very, very wet month, and we're limited on, on a month for that diversion, if we're, if we need to make up that much, we will, to get to the 7,950 from the lake component. And Yolo is well aware of this.
Who was it, Ellen?
Okay, I was just going to try to answer one of your questions, too, is I believe it to be true. We actually own the property where the pumping station is for the lake. So, and it's our maintenance. So that's, therefore, I believed we needed to be on the contract as well for the lake, like, lake water coming out, because that's actually our, ours.
Yeah, correct. We own, Lake County Sanitation District owns that.
Yes.
Just real quick, and I don't want to belabor this too long, I just wanted to highlight and maybe ask, if there is, because of the loss of water, the drought, the loss of recharged water, and then also surface water due to cyanobacteria blooms, is there a plan in place? I know that, that might have been written up when you had the, I couldn't read or see it when you, when you did that, so, it's okay. I just wanted to ask that. It's not, it hasn't.
What exactly, what we're going to do about the?
The drought, because of recent droughts and whatnot, and future potential droughts, loss of recharged water and surface water because of cyanobacteria blooms, because when there's no lack of recharge or water going into the stream, from the streams, the cyanobacteria will sit and, and, you know, create more of an enhanced situation of that. So just a plan, or just any type of analysis of that?
Well, I know that, that there's no allowed diverted water out of the lake if there's a drought, so they won't be able to pull water out of the lake. But, I mean, we're not, we would never be putting effluent back into our lake, anyway. It violates a state agreement that we have, that effluent cannot be discharged into our waterways that lead to the lake or into the lake. So.
I appreciate it.
We wouldn't be impacting, you know, what's going on in the lake, anything further than, and if it's a drought, then they're not pulling water out.
Right. And I just wanted that said for the record, just to state it, so. Well, I think we're pretty much almost finished here, yeah. Okay. Well, I, I just, yeah, thank you for that. And I don't really have anything to follow with it. I just wanted to have it stated for.
Yeah, well, I think it's in May, they look at the Rumsey Gauge.
I think it was, I think that's when, the end of April.
And they look to see what the Rumsey Gauge is, and that's when they make the call if diverters can divert water out of the lake or not.
For the entire year.
Yeah, for the whole year.
Yes, for the entire.
It has to be to a certain height.
So it's May, May 1 to April 30.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just wanted to remind the chair that there is, I believe the Board of Supervisors can override that, because we have in the past, when there was a request for more water during the drought.
Yep.
Because of the, you were cleaning up the pipeline on the Sonoma side, and you needed some excess water in order to make sure that you had the available water in your systems.
Right. Thank you. Anything else from the board? And anything else to finalize?
No.
All right.
All right. Sitting as the chair.
Lloyd, sorry.
And just, only because it was framed in the recommend, in the recommended action language, since there are two separate agreements, the suggestion here would be to approve with authors, and authorize the chair to sign each agreement in separate motions. And also just for clarification, I mentioned the 1995 water supply agreement, it's actually 1994 water supply agreement, just for clarification on the record.
Can you give the motion?
Yes. So the first motion for your board's consideration would be, a motion to approve Amendment Number 4 to the Joint Operating Agreement, Southeast Geysers Effluent Pipeline Project, and authorize the chair to sign. And this is your board sitting in as Board of Directors of the Lake County Sanitation District Board.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're a aye.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the second.
Five, zero. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then the second motion would be to, again, sitting in as Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, District Board of Directors, motion to approve the Clear Lake Water Supply Agreement, and authorize the board chair to sign. And just for clarification, for, for the public's own reference, the two agreements that's being referenced in the previous motion, and also on this motion, would be the agreements that were uploaded in Granicus and Legistar as labeled addendum, both of those, because those are the finalized versions of the agreements. But that would be the motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries five, zero.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. So Lloyd, next item, I know we have a 6.4, but also, we have the hearings, assessment hearings. Which one is priority here, when it comes to that? Because it's 10, and the other one was at 9:30, but we're at 10.
Your board would have the option to take up either, you may, you're, as chair, you may want to make an announcement as to, in case anyone's waiting for either of those items, to announce which one you'd plan on taking first. But it's up to your board's discretion, since we're past 10 a.m., and both of those items are a fit under that timeline.
I apologize. Patrick, we're going to go ahead and take the assessment hearings up real quick, and then we'll go after that. So, we'll go on to our eight point. Is everyone okay with that on the board?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll go to 8.1, sitting as the Board of Equalization, Assessment Appeal. 8.1, Consideration of Stipulation of Assessment Appeal Applications, number 32-224, 2024, and 33-2024, Lots of Realty. And I think we have to swear some folks in, when it comes to this as well.
I don't think he's, he showed up, right? All right. If you're on Zoom and you're going to speak on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom. All right, no hands in Zoom. Everybody else, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right.
Oh my gosh, is that all for me, or pass it down?
Okay.
Come on, it's still thick.
Go ahead.
Good morning. My name's Landay Janakis. I'm Chief Deputy Assessor Recorder. With me today, Michelle Bookinani. She's Senior Appraiser, and Thomas Hinston is our Auditor, Appraiser. So we.
There you go. You pull the mic closer.
Not sure if it, is it turned on?
There you go.
There it goes. The first hearing is 8.1, and it is for Lots Realty. They have stipulated. They came to an agreement. They, we looked at the market. They have two homes, and they want to know if we could lower to a Prop 8 temporary reduction, and we agreed. And so, and they agreed with the values that we came up with. So, we're asking for stipulation on that.
All right. Any comments from the board? All right. I don't have the open for public input, do I? Lloyd, on this one?
No.
Every time I do, I don't. It tells me I do, and then, I think for these, I don't have to, yeah. Or we don't have to, sorry.
It's at your board's, or board chair's, at discretion, depending on who may want to testify.
I didn't see anyone else stand up to swear in, or anyone.
Or in Zoom.
All right. So with that. There's no motion, so. We'll prove, so, go ahead, Lloyd.
So the motion for your board's consideration would be to approve the stipulation for the properties, I think that's plural, just confirming, there's more than one property.
There are two.
Two properties.
Yes, two properties.
For the properties described in Agenda Item 8.1.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries five, zero. We'll move on to 8.2, Consideration of Withdrawal of Assessment Appeal Applications, number 26, 2024, Jeffrey Anderson, and B, 28, 2024, 16-2021, 24-2022, and 14-2023, Tesla. Go ahead.
The appeal number 26, 24, Jeffrey Anderson. The applicant filed assessment appeals for 23 and 24 tax years. The 23 appeal was resolved through a stipulation. Followed in this resolution, the applicant withdrew the 24 appeal, as the matter was addressed by the terms of the 23 stipulation.
Anything else to add? Any questions from the board? Lloyd?
Yeah. And thank you, Mr. Chair. So your board may just want to, just in case, to see if there's anyone to testify on this.
No hands in Zoom? Anybody in the chambers? No? So we just basically accept the withdrawal?
Yes, and so it would be by motion. It would be a motion to accept withdrawal on the listed assessment appeal applications under Item 8.2, and deny the appeal.
So move.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries five, zero. 8.3?
Another, 8.2, have another one.
Oh, yes, the B. Sorry, the 28, 24, and, yep, there you go.
A Tesla Energy Operations. The assessed value was adjusted based on the updated life survey and the factor table for solar systems. These updates were approved by the California Assessor Association, published in October 24, and applied retroactively to 2016. The applicant agreed with the assessor value and withdrew.
All right.
Okay.
Anything to add? All right. I don't see anybody in Zoom. Would you say, no, anyone in the chambers? All right. Lloyd?
So, yeah, it would be a motion to withdraw, accept the withdrawal on the listed assessment appeal applications, as identified by the County Assessor Recorder's Office, and deny the appeal under Agenda Item 8.2.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. 8.3, Assessment Appeal Applications, number 22-2024, Matthew Barbado and Kristen Barbado Trust. Go ahead.
The applicant, the applicant has requested a continuation, and the assessor office has no objection.
All right. Any, anyone on Zoom? None in the chambers. Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for this continuance request, it would be, for your board's consideration, a motion to continue Assessment Appeal Applications, 22-2024, to a, to a date and time, sir, and.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five, zero. 8.4, Consideration of Denial of Assessment Appeal Applications, number 34-2024, Waste Connections of California Incorporated, B, 35, 2024, Quackenbush Mountain Resource Recovery and Compost Facility LLC, C, 36-2024, South Lake Refuge Company, and D, Mendocino Leasing Company Incorporated, due to lack of response from the applicant, and it looks like we have a request to withdraw?
Yes. The assessor office has reached out to the applicant multiple times. We have no response, but this morning at 8:30, we received an email from the agent requesting a withdrawal.
All right. Anything to add? Any on Zoom? None in the chambers? And so we would accept the withdrawal?
Yes, and it would also be by motion, and so the motion would be, a motion to accept the withdrawals on the listed assessment appeal applications, and deny the appeal. The identified assessment appeal applications would be the ones identified in Agenda Item 8.4.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have to go through each B, C, D, or to cover all of them?
It can't, it. It can cover all of them.
Oh, excellent.
As it has been done in the past.
Thank you, Lloyd. 8.5, Consideration of Assessment Appeal Applications, number 39 through 2024, well, 39-2024 through 46, 2024, Gavin McIntyre. All right.
Good morning. It's Mr. McIntyre. Do we proceed just regularly?
Is that at our discretion, Lloyd, if the applicant's not here, to move forward?
They sign, they'll be here.
Yeah. And so your board has that discretion. Your board may want to confirm with the Assessor Recorder's Office if there is any request for a continuance, based on this update of the applicant, the applicant appellant currently being absent, or if they're willing to move forward.
We are willing to move forward.
All right. There hasn't been a request for continuance or anything, so.
We can present.
Are you willing to move forward? I'm pretty.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just as a preliminary matter, your board may also want to inquire with the County Assessor Recorder's Office staff as to the notice, and so, just so it can be placed on the record, the notice that any procedures of notice that was provided to the applicant, leading up to today, in which the applicant appellant is absent. So your board may want to inquire about that and make it as part of the record.
He responded to the notice? Okay.
It is.
All right.
It's the last attachment.
Go ahead and proceed.
Hey, good morning. Mr. Gavin McIntyre presented with appeals for the 2017 through 2024 tax years of escaped assessments. Mr. McIntyre stated that his parcel is landlocked, and that he has concerns that he does not have a legal easement for his road. Oh, thank you. Mr. McIntyre stated that he believed the assessed values were too high. On the 78-plus or minus acre parcel, we have discovered a mobile home, an owner-built barn, sheds, water tanks, a pool, as well as other miscellaneous structures. Mr. McIntyre stated that there is not a known well or spring on the property, and no water is available. And all the findings are as follows. So we searched Google Earth, and as of 8th of 2017, there are images of the mobile home. He has crops, he has sheds, he has. He has crops, he has sheds, he has a pool with a floaty toy in it and miscellaneous outbuildings. And then a year later, seven eighteen, same thing, um, and uh, I think there's a new deck on there as well. In June of twenty one, it shows the new construction of a barn and some other miscellaneous improvements. In July of twenty three, um, this image shows Forest Route, um, eighteen north twenty nine that runs through the subject property directly off of Road M six, uh, Forest Route twenty north one and it's sometimes called River Road. So the granting of the property, um, in October of eighty six Shirley McIntyre declared that this property was her principal dwelling and that she currently resides on the property. And then the Shirley granted to her son, Mr. McIntyre. It was notarized and signed on June second of twenty fifteen, but he did not record it until May second of twenty twenty two. And this is where some of the issues, why we're here today because he um, so prior to twenty twenty two, the property was assessed under Prop thirteen base year value to Reginald and Sherry Thebado. And then a grant D recorded five two twenty two transferred the property to Gavin McIntyre. Following this transfer, the assessor's office reassessed the property and enrolled market value due to a change in ownership. And then honor before November twelfth of twenty four, Mr. McIntyre contacted the assessor's office regarding his notice of escaped assessments related to the transfer from his mother Shirley to himself and he requested an informal review. During the review, the assessor's office discovered that the property had been transferred to Mr. McIntyre in twenty fifteen, but the change of ownership did not record until twenty two. As a result, the assessor's office reassessed the property using twenty fifteen as the actual change in ownership date and enrolled eight years of escaped assessments for tax years twenty seventeen through twenty twenty four as per the Revenue and Taxation Code, section five thirty two two. The twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four assessed values were adjusted to reflect the twenty fifteen base year value. In twenty twenty four, Mr. McIntyre filed a parent-to-child exclusion from reassessment and after reviewing the submission, the assessor's office approved the Proposition fifty eight exclusion for twenty twenty four and uh, forward. And that is per RTC, section sixty three point one E two. And then we move on to, so we have uh, the original assessment where the improvements were two hundred and fifty thousand and the land was a hundred and forty. The next, the next shows the escaped, um, eight years after the reassessment, um, forward from twenty fifteen. And then the next one is the Prop fifty eight valuation from twenty fifteen forward with structures coming on in twenty sixteen. Prop fifty eight, parent-to-child exclusion, California Revenue and Taxation Code, six, section sixty three point one E two. Any exclusion granted for a claim that is filed subsequent to the expiration of the filing period shall apply commencing with the lien date of the assessment year in which the claim is filed. And as you can see here, that was uh, December thirteenth of twenty twenty four. He also filed a homeowner's exemption, December third of twenty twenty four, um, that this is his primary residence and where he resides. The applicant's appraisal that he had done, um, December twentieth twenty four, Mr. McIntyre filed a formal appeal for each year twenty seventeen through twenty twenty four supplying an appraisal from John Rinson, the former Mendocino County Assessor and current independent appraiser. He found, Mr. Rinson found the total value of the property to be a hundred and twenty nine thousand from three comparable sales ranging from a hundred and twenty nine thousand to a hundred and ninety five thousand. This appraisal used comparable sales from twenty two, twenty three and twenty four, all of which are out of the twenty fifteen transfer date and are not usable. The time period for sales per the Board of Equalization is ninety days past the date of sale. So we had to, date of transfer, so we had to use the twenty fifteen valuation here. Uh, the assessor's office appraisal comparables, October seventh of twenty twenty five, twenty fifteen comparable sales found for vacant land ranged between one thousand and fifty three per acre to nine thousand two hundred and eight per acre. Mr. McIntyre was assessed at one hundred, excuse me, one thousand nine hundred and seventeen per acre. His twenty fifteen base year value was assessed at a hundred and seventy thousand, allocated at a hundred and fifty thousand to land and twenty thousand to improvements and factored forward through twenty twenty four, at which time his parent-to-child exclusion took effect and his mother's base year value was restored for land and established for improvements. And the next slide, it shows the uh, up close of the comparable sales that we used and um, as you can see, the last one from six twenty seven fourteen, it was uh, not listed, it was solid rock, there was no water and there's no access and no utility. This was, this is one of those way out in the middle of nowhere, there are no roads at all to it. And that one was at one thousand and fifty three. The next best one would be of course, the third one on eight fifteen fourteen. It was an accepted sale price, but it has a spring and everything else is similar, um, access to the subject. So that would be the next best at two thousand six hundred and seventy seven per square foot, but it does have water, known water. And so as ours comes, our assessment came in between both of those. There are easement deeds. One of his um, arguments is that he does not have legal access to his property. So October sixteenth, we found two deeds. One from nineteen sixty four where the owner of his property at that time granted a road easement to the United States of America to build a road. And another from twenty nineteen where PG&E grants reservation of rights and easements, whereas the subject parcel is described as having a permanent easement. And then I also um, included those um, book and page where you can find those recordings and um, a highlighted um, where, where it calls out the easements for his property. And then next we have the um, section township and range map. So as you can see, the little red square up there within that, that is his property. If you can see the yellow little road going through it, that is the road that the USA built. That is the um, the road eighteen, I can't see it here, eighteen north twenty nine. And so that's, yeah, eighteen north twenty nine, that runs directly through his property. In the other images, you can see that there are roads. I give you some addendums. He has cleared the property, he has, um, he has built the roads. And so. Yeah, that's my conclusion. Uh, let's see, October sixteenth, Mr. McIntyre came in for an in-person meeting to go over his assessment and other questions and we were unable to come to any agreements. This property is Mr. McIntyre's primary residence. There is an easement document granting access for the road that runs through his property. In addition, PG&E has an easement document that provides road access as described in the referenced legal description. Uh, comparable sales show values assessed were at the lower end of the market value and the assessor's office respectfully requests the board determine the findings.
Anything else to add? Anybody on Zoom? In the chambers? Anything from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The PG&E easement is that for the power going to that parcel?
It is a road easement, um.
So he does have power out there is what I'm asking?
We don't know. We don't know. He, I think he said he had a generator. I do believe he did say he had a generator. Where his water is coming from for his crops, his pool, his, his use because it is his primary residence. He does have water tanks.
Okay, so he might be hauling it.
So somebody's hauling it in, but he says he doesn't have access.
Now the road, um, the PG&E road, does that give him access?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on a PG&E easement, he's allowed to use a PG&E easement?
It, the just legal description is all that certain parcel of land situate in sections twenty six, thirty four and thirty five, township eighteen north, range eleven, west of the Mount Diablo Base in Meridian in the counties of Mendocino and Lake, state of California, being more just, uh, more particularly described as follows. So he is in section thirty five.
Okay.
That is his, where his property is.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I think that's all we have from questions and uh, we can take action.
So uh, your board with the request from County Assessor Recorder's Staff with the evidence that was uh, submitted to your board for consideration, your board may consider a motion to uh, to deny the appeal and as part of that motion, um, it would be the denial of the, of appeal numbers thirty nine dash twenty twenty four, forty dash twenty twenty four, forty one dash twenty twenty four, forty two dash twenty twenty four, forty three dash twenty twenty four, forty four dash twenty twenty four, forty five dash twenty twenty four and forty six dash twenty twenty four, all pertaining to a property described under assessor parcel number zero zero one dash zero three one dash zero eight oh, just to make it all as part of the record for purposes of that motion language.
So move.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Covers this, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
We are going to take a quick five-minute break and come back and do our six point four. All right, welcome back from the break. Go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda. Our six point. Four. Consideration of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty five Report of Lake County Pooled Investments and B consideration of the September thirtieth, twenty twenty five Report of Lake County Pooled Investments, Treasurer Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Patrick Sullivan, County Treasurer Tax Collector, and I'm here with Carlos Oblidos from Chandler Asset Management. So we're going to go through a presentation of the quarterly report ending September thirtieth of this year. We're also going to touch on the June report as well, um, just to give some highlights there, but we'll be focused on this one. And I'll go ahead and share my screen and then if Mr. Oblidos would like to lead off here.
Let's start on pages fourteen and fifteen. All right. I think we're sharing a mic.
Or, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Supervisors, good morning. I'd like to report to you on the results of your county treasuries.
I'd like to report to you on the results of your county treasuries investment portfolio. The news are all around good. There have been some changes in the economy that I want to discuss and I'm certain that you may have questions about it and I'm happy to address some of those. But to start with, I'd just like to start with the statement of compliance on the report, pages fourteen and then also fifteen. You can see that everything is in compliance with California Government Code and the county's investment policy. This is an important part of your investment program. As you are all aware, some of you intimately, that your investments are governed by California Government Code. There are several restrictions on what you can do in those investments. Everything, and I'm happy to report, everything is within compliance and within all tolerable limits that are allowed in your investment policy. If we go to page number sixteen, this is a consolidation of the entire pool's treasury, the entire investment program. It's currently valued as of September thirtieth at four hundred and sixty-five and a half, a little bit over four hundred and sixty-five and a half million dollars. That comprises three components. One of those components has been wound down and I'll explain that in just a moment. The yield to maturity as of September thirtieth was four point three one percent. If you remember my analogy, a yield to maturity is the way that the portfolio is currently structured, what you are expected to earn into the future on an annualized basis. So the annual number in terms of income coming into the portfolio into the future, the way that you're structured right now. Obviously, when there are maturities of bonds in that portfolio, that portfolio, that money comes back to you and it gets reinvested. That reinvestment is done at a yield that's available in the market. Obviously, whatever the market provides, that moves your average yield up or down. Currently, it's been moving downward and that's, well, actually, in the last three months, it moved upward just slightly, but it's expected that that should start coming downwards because market yields have been lower and I can explain all of that in just a moment. Very high credit quality, double A plus, which is considered very high. It's a very well diversified portfolio. If we go to page number seventeen, you are lending money, remember that these are bonds, yours, the securities in this portfolio are bond investments, are fixed income investments. For those of you that are not familiar with bonds, it's a loan, you're effectively lending money out and you collect interest on that money, you're collecting rent for lending that money out. And then, of course, the promise of that future cash flow coming to you can be sold, so it has a value and that value can go up and down in the market based on what other alternative cash flows are out there, whatever their alternative investments may be had. You're lending to the U.S. Treasury, to the United States Government, approximately twenty-seven and three-quarters, almost twenty-eight percent of the portfolio is in U.S. Treasury Securities. Those are considered the safest of investments and a hallmark, a pillar of a portfolio that's designed for safety and liquidity as yours is. If you remember, your objectives under California Government Code are safety first, followed by liquidity, the money has to be available when you need it, and then after those two objectives are met, then you pursue a return and that return comes in the form of interest income and as I mentioned earlier, the fair value of the portfolio can move up and down. We do lend to corporate, very high credit quality corporate issuers and you can see some of the names in this portfolio. There was a season where we had a buildup of cash. We did hold a secondary portfolio within this consolidated piece here that was maintained for very, very short cash needs. There was a one-time opportunity where we collaborated with your treasurer to set up a side portfolio to do that and capture some higher yields while that money was being reserved for short-term needs. The use of that portfolio, the utility of that portfolio kind of went away. The reasons for having it, the advantage that you were getting, the market just sort of made them disappear. So as a result, that portfolio was allowed to age in and build up as cash and then that was eventually folded back into the main portfolio. That's being reallocated or has been reallocated as we speak. Some of it is still held in cash, but it's in the process of being reallocated. I'd like to flip forward to page number twenty-one. Overall, as I mentioned, you know, rates, we've been able to capture rates as rates were higher in the markets. You can see the history of that purchase yield that we looked at earlier, but as I stated, it's anticipated that this yield will start gradually coming down. The yields that are available to us in the markets today are lower than they were two months ago, three months ago, and a year ago, and I can show you a chart on that, but it just means that as we have maturities in the portfolio or if we sell out of something before maturity to rebalance the portfolio, that new reinvestment is going to happen at a lower yield and as those creep into the portfolio and replace higher yielding securities, this average yield that you see here on page twenty-one should start gradually coming down. Part of your strategy that you set up with your Treasury Tax Collector when we began working for you, part of that strategy was to pursue a longer duration position in the portfolio and that was basically meant to stay at somewhere around one and three-quarters, one point eight years. That strategy is now of very good use to you because it just means that we buy securities primarily between one and three years, sometimes longer, sometimes as long as five years, but they averaged one point seven, one point eight years. Now, as yields fall, you have pieces in your portfolio that you're going to be waiting, if you hold them to maturity, you're going to be waiting upwards of three, four, five years to replace. It means that they're higher yielding securities that are going to stay in the portfolio for longer and as rates in the markets fall, there are less maturities coming in than had you been much shorter. So in essence, this longer strategy is protecting your income right now and it will do so for some time. If we go to the individual portfolios, the main portfolio is on page number twenty-three. This is the main one that I'm talking about. The duration currently is one point eight, two years. If you look at the middle column, second row, the duration and the weighted average maturity are very similar. The weighted average maturity just tells you on average how often things are maturing. It tells you right now, they mature on average, this portfolio turns over about every two point two years on average. As I stated, there are longer pieces, but the duration is a different number, it's a risk measure. It tells us how sensitive the market value of this portfolio is for a given interest rate shift in the markets, shifts in interest rates in the markets move around your market value. One point eight two years means that there will be a one point eight two gain in fair value if rates fall a hundred basis points, one percent across the board. One point eight two years means a one point eight, one point eight two percent gain or loss, I should say, if rates go the opposite way, if they rise. Rates and prices move inverse to one another in the bond markets. This portfolio, the current yield to maturity is four thirty-eight, that's very strong. But if you look at the market yield, that's the yield I would get on this portfolio if I invested new money in this strategy to make it look like this portfolio as of the date of this report. Notice that that's three eight six. It infers a reinvestment rate. So you're currently earning into the future four point three eight, which was higher from three months ago, four point two five, I'm looking at the middle row, but the market yield three months ago was four oh five. You can see that that's fallen. It's because market rates are much lower today than they were. It just means, what this means in translation is, within six months to nine months, you should see lower income come into this portfolio. The interest rate cycle is shifting and the yields that are available will be lower into the future and it just means that your income will not be as strong as it has been over the past couple of years. Let's flip forward to page twenty-five, the return on that portfolio. And I want to, we don't usually present returns, but we thought it was a worthy number to take a look at. This is how we, so rather than a yield of maturity which looks forward as to what you're expected to earn in interest income only, this is a look back. It's a look back at the portfolio of how this portfolio grew for a given period of time and that growth is coming, as measured in this number, it's a total return. That growth is coming from interest income that you actually earned and collected. Also, if anything was sold before maturity, if there was a realized gain or a loss on that sale, that is also included in here. And we also include the change in value on paper for all the securities in the portfolio. So if the interest rate shifted and it caused the portfolio to go down in value or up in value, that number is captured here as well. So it's a very holistic view of how this portfolio grew for the past twelve months, ended September thirtieth, the growth was four point three two percent. You grew this portfolio four point three two and I would tell you that a lot of that, in fact, most of that came from interest income, about, call it six, eight, seven-eighths of this portfolio came from interest income. We have a benchmark, it measures the amount of risk that we're taking on to try and achieve these returns. Well, the return for that benchmark was only three eighty-eight for the portfolio versus your four thirty-two. For the amount of risk that you're taking on, you've beaten your performance measuring benchmark, you've done well. Over the past two years, that number, that return number for the portfolio was five point six two, which is very strong. I would say that about two-thirds of that came from interest income, maybe three-quarters came from interest income. The rest came from fair value appreciation and versus the benchmark of five twenty-nine, again, you've done well. Since we've been working with you on this portfolio, which goes back to the weird dark days of the pandemic in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we started, we actually started investing in November, October of twenty twenty-one, you've been averaging two point seven percent per year versus the benchmark of two point zero nine. That encompasses a period of time when interest rates were below one percent, if you remember that, below half a percent in part of that time period. So you've done okay. The next page on page twenty-six, this has the same returns, but as of your fiscal year end. We didn't get a chance to report from June in person as we normally do, but this gives you how, an idea of how you ended your fiscal year. Well, your fiscal year ended June thirtieth, so I'm just looking back at that one-year return as of the prior June. Well, that return was five point nine, so very, very, very strong returns. I would tell you, I'm going to flip back over to, let's take a look at page number nine. What you're looking at on the right-hand side chart of page number nine is the effective federal funds rate. If you remember, Fed funds is that overnight lending rate, it's the rate that banks charge one another for an overnight loan. Banks take loans out from one another to meet capital requirements and such and this is generally what they end up paying each other. And this rate is set, a target for this rate is set by the Federal Reserve in the United States and that's how they control monetary policy. In essence, the Fed sets a target for this by saying, we will raise that target if we think that inflation is very high to basically make it more expensive for banks and it gets passed out to the bond markets and to people and personal loans and such. It basically makes it more expensive for people to borrow and what it does is it removes money out of people's hands. They have less money to go spend and because when they're spending money, they're competing for goods and services and that competition can drive prices higher. That's called inflation and too much inflation is a bad thing. So when the economy's heating up and there's money in people's pockets, they make it more expensive to borrow, cutting off access to credit by raising rates, by making it more expensive. If you think of buying a home and you have a mortgage of five percent or, let's say, six percent and now all of a sudden mortgage rates go to six and a half, it's too expensive to afford that house because you can't afford the payment. So you might wait until rates come down and when rates come down, maybe you jump back in. While you wait, you're not spending that money and driving those prices higher. So in this instance, the Federal Reserve, the opposite is happening. What is happening is the job, the economy is slowing down and we're not generating as many jobs as we have in the past. So the Federal Reserve is doing the opposite. They want to put money in people's hands, so they spend and that creates demand, which causes businesses to expand. They borrow, it's cheaper for them to borrow, they expand, they hire more people and they generate more jobs. They stimulate the economy by lowering interest rates. So the Federal Reserve is in that mode right now and they've lowered rates twice and they paused for a long time and then they lowered rates twice again. The last meeting was at the end of October, October twenty-nine. It is generally expected, it was generally expected by most investors that the Federal Reserve would lower rates once more again between now and the end of the year. There is a meeting, they meet about every eight weeks. It's expected that they were going to lower rates again in their December meeting. The odds of that before the last October meeting was like almost one hundred percent because we can generate probabilities on this based on where investors buy futures contracts on these things, it's complicated, but basically the odds were close to a hundred percent. Those odds are less than fifty percent today and that's simply because after the last meeting, after the last meeting, the Federal Reserve released their minutes as they normally do and they give a press release. And one of the things they said was, we see the economy still resilient, showing some strength, but job creation has moderated, we're not generating as many jobs. And not only that, but at the point that they met, the government had been shut down for close to a month and the government releases key indicators, key data, economic data that they use to make these decisions, primarily the jobs creation number known as the non-farm payrolls, which comes out the first Friday of every month, and also inflation. Now, eventually, the government, through the Bureau of Labor Statistics, they released a CPI number, Consumer Price Index, which is an inflation number. They needed it because they had to calculate COLA adjustments for social security benefits. So we have that number, it came in at three percent, which was elevated, which means prices are still a little higher, but the jobs numbers are expected, they were already weak coming into the government shutdown. Now that we're in this government shutdown, it's over, it's the longest that we've had in history, forty-seven days. There's a lot of uncertainty as to what the Federal Reserve is going to do, but in essence, what we think is happening is that we're still in a little bit of a late cycle economy. If you look at the economy and the business cycle, we're sort of at late stage, which means that we're seeing weakness permeate and there is still room for the Federal Reserve to lower rates at some point in the future, if not at the next meeting, certainly within the next six months of twenty twenty-six. What does that mean for you? What it means is that if they lower that target rate and the market sort of follow through and we don't have some sort of inflationary effect coming through all of this, you should see reinvestments coming in at lower rates. It means that earnings, those strong and historically strong from what you've seen over the last fifteen years, they just won't be as robust as they have been in the past year. The opposite side of all of this, the bright side of all of this, of course, is that when rates fall, the value of your existing investments actually go up. Sometimes that gets realized when we reposition, sometimes it doesn't, but we do book that as I just showed you in the total return number, so that's a good thing. And certainly, your auditor controller will book that in the annual consolidated financial statements that you, or report that you issue every year. That'll get booked in your earnings. So from a financial position, you're in very good shape. From a safety and liquidity position, this investment program is in very good shape. Your treasurer takes steps to make sure that this, the approaches are very well diversified through using our management services in this portfolio, through utilizing local government investment pools that are available to him and his staff and making sure all the time that money is available when needed and optimize as much as possible. I'll stop there and take any questions you may have.
Supervisor Pisca?
I always love it when you come to visit, Carlos. We learn so much and our portfolio is, you know, it's just one of the things I think we're all most proud of right now. We knew it was going to peak out at some point and I think we're right about in the time that we thought that that was going to happen and right about at the amount that we thought that it was going to happen. And so, looking forward, I know it's really hard given every, all, everything you just told us, but what should we expect for budgeting and planning for the next year? Like how, I mean, how significant do you think falls will be?
The impact for next year, for next fiscal year shouldn't be significant.
Okay.
But it will be lower. It goes back to a statement that I made earlier, which is that because you have a longer duration strategy, your strategy is to stay in the range of somewhere around one point seven, one point eight years, regardless of what investments are doing. Logically, you would want to get as long as possible when rates are falling and as short as possible when rates are rising. Logically, if you think about it, if I have more, if I'm shorter on average, I have more maturities coming in, which I can then redeploy faster in increasingly higher rates as rates rise and the opposite when rates are falling. So if rates are falling, I want to get as long as possible. That means that I have less money coming due, which they hang on to their yield for a longer period of time and I'm not forced to reinvest in lower rates available in the market as rates fall. But of course, getting super long, super short, how do you make that determine, when do you do that and at what point do you get in and what point do you get out and how long will rates be moving? No one knows that and this is why you pick a target, you stick with it regardless of what rates are doing. Now, we do position shorter and longer within a band around that target. That target is protecting your income for next year. Only a small portion of this portfolio will be replaced with those lower yields between now and the end of the fiscal year. So only a portion of the portfolio, not the entire program. So if you hear that Fed funds target rate is somewhere around three and three-quarters to four percent, which is what they're targeting, and your portfolio, you're reinvesting in somewhere around three point eight or something like that, those reinvestments only impacts a portion of the portfolio. So it will take some time and the reason it will take some time is because you selected, you implemented this strategy of being longer, which frankly is protecting you at the moment. I think that the impact will be harder felt possibly in, not this next fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, but who knows what rates may look like at that time.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
I might be able to add something to that if it helps. We did have this chart that I was going to go over and this is just, we've been putting up each time, it's the quarterly earnings for the county because I think partially in answer to Supervisor Pisca's question, the rate that you were seeing in the report from Chandler, that's based on accruals that are coming in and money based on accruals that are coming in and money that we're earning that we actually haven't realized yet. Because bond payments come every six months, let's say. So this is the actual cash flow into the county, into the treasury. This is when the cash actually hits us, and this is what we're seeing. So these are the numbers that are essentially plugged into the budget. And so what I guess I would point out is that, yeah, we're definitely hitting the peak here. If you see, this last quarter, we bottomed all over 6 million. I would expect, based off what we're seeing, that this is either the highest, or next quarter could potentially be higher, but because we've been spending down our cash, that's unlikely by my estimation. So I think you're probably seeing the peak. So as you go up, I think as Carlos was stating, if we're seeing this rate drop, where we're going to be reinvesting at 25 or 30 basis points lower than we've been, then really you're going to see numbers more like where they were in here, I think, in the next fiscal year. After that, if it stabilizes, if the Fed doesn't keep cutting rates, we may basically sit just below where we are. But if they keep cutting rates, then just as this chart has gone up slowly, we would see that actual cash coming in go down over the upcoming years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, open it up for public comment?
No.
All right, not hearing any. Close public comment and bring it back to the board. Lloyd, anything? I seen you move your hand, so I thought maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's two recommended actions that can be taken as one motion, which is to accept the reports, the one from June 30, 2025, and September 30, 2025. That would be the-
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Patrick and Carlos.
Thank you.
Did you see him?
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatia.
Mr. Chair, I apologize, but I've made a mistake that I would like to clarify, and I would like to reconsider item 5.14 if the board so chooses to do so. There are certain criterias to meet. My plan is I wish to abstain because of the lack of information, and I should have done so, and I made a mistake. And there is stipulation within the statute that if those who were here in public are no longer here, that we can put that on the next agenda. I don't believe that we are going to change the outcome of the vote, so I don't know if that is absolutely necessary. But on record, I would like to rescind my vote and change it to abstain, and I'm asking the board to reconsider item 5.14.
Lloyd?
So under Rule 9, on a meeting of the same day, any board member who votes in the majority on the question is eligible to make a motion to reconsider. So if that is before your board, it would be two motions, or clarification or confirmation from Supervisor Sabatia, because there were two separate motions taken up under item 5.14. And so on, before your board right now, would be the motions, motions, plural, to reconsider the votes on those two agreements under Agenda Item 5.14. So for that request for reconsideration, your board may, your board may want to take in public comment as well, just for that motion, and before your board takes any action on the reconsideration request.
So for this right now, I should open up the public right now?
I make the motion to reconsider the two, to see if there is a second.
And my suggestion here would be to just take up public comment on the motion to reconsider, because, you know, because there is a motion that's being proposed before your board today.
Gotcha.
Any public comment on that? Not in the chambers. Close public comment. Do not have a motion.
And just to clarify, it could be more appropriate, the suggestion here would be, it would be more appropriate to move to reconsider, to have two motions, because it pertains to each separate agreement. So the first motion for your board's consideration would be to motion to reconsider the vote on Amendment Number 4 to the Joint Operating Agreement, Southeast Geysers Affluent Pipeline Project, under Agenda Item 5.14. And this would be made with your board sitting in as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Sanitation District.
So moved.
So I have, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
No.
Motion carries three, two. Do we need another one?
Yes, and it would be, this one would be, would change to the next agreement, the other agreement under Agenda Item 5.14, and that would be a motion to reconsider the vote on the Clear Lake Water Supply Agreement, again, sitting in as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Sanitation District.
So moved.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three, two.
With those two motions to reconsider, having passed by a majority vote, your board may, at this point, want, take up, may want to essentially take up item, Agenda Item 5.14. It essentially reopens 5.14, so that your board again may want to take public comment to that.
I'll open it right now.
Further discussion, and then it would, and then the vote would then be before your board to, as it relates to those two agreements, for the approval of each of those agreements.
Vice Chair?
Just a question, so we don't, we don't have the folks in the room here, so that would be my concern, that they have the opportunity to be here.
Supervisor Owen.
I feel that the only change is that Mr. Sabatia just wants to-
Abstain.
Abstain. So I don't have a problem, because I know it's going to pass. I just think that he just wants to be on record.
Lloyd?
And that would be up to your board's discretion, as Supervisor Sabatia has laid out. It could either be taken today under certain parameters, or the other option is to take it at a future regular board meeting. The language of Rule 9 states that a motion to reconsider shall be in order during the meeting at which the action to be reconsidered took place, provided members of the public in attendance during the original action are still present in the board chamber. In all other cases, motions for reconsideration must be placed on a future agenda for action.
So we can't finalize it today?
Well, that would be up to your board if your-
I would like to just finalize it. I'd like to make the offer right now.
So open it up for public comment, because that's, no hands and no one in the chambers. Did you have something else?
Well, I guess I'll, I'm okay with taking it up today without further discussion on my concern.
Yep.
Right. Lloyd?
Okay, and you're, Mr. Chair, you opened it up for a public comment. Just to clarify, that is the public comment for Agenda Item 5.14, which is effectively reopened as a result of the reconsideration.
I open. And so I think bringing it back for action, right?
Yep.
Yes.
And I'd like to make the offer.
Okay. And I could walk, if I may-
Please.
Walk through the two separate motions for that. Okay. So sitting in as the Lake County Board of Directors for the Lake County Sanitation District, the motion would be to approve Amendment Number 4 to the Joint Operating Agreement, Southeast Geysers Affluent Pipeline Project, and authorize the chair to sign.
I make the offer?
Or motion, right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. All right, motion carries four, zero, one.
And then the second motion would be to, as, sitting in as Lake County Board of Directors for Lake County Sanitation District, motion would be to approve the Clear Lake Water Supply Agreement. Again, as with the previous motion, just to clarify, this would be the finalized versions of the agreement marked as addendum in the documents uploaded to Granica slash Legistar. So that would be the motion, and authorize the chair to sign.
And I make the offer.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries four, zero, one. We'll close that item. Move on to our 6.5, Public Hearing, Consideration of Ordinance to amend Chapter 21, Article 27 of the Lake County Code for Commercial Cannabis Uses, and Community Development Director, Maria Turner.
Thank you, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. Staff does request a continuance on this item. The ordinance is in progress and is on schedule to be presented to the Planning Commission in their December meeting in a notice public hearing, and then will follow with the board hearing in January.
All right. Any questions? I'll open it up, the public comment. No public comment? Any on Zoom?
No.
No on Zoom, so we'll bring it back to the board. And so Lloyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for this particular item, because it stems from the November 4, 2025, board, your board's discussion of this item back in November 4, 2025, in which your board gave some direction to staff in relation to what is anticipated to be a proposed ordinance. But since we don't have an ordinance in place, your board may want to just continue the item or direct staff to continue the item, and that can be for a date and time certain. That is to be distinguished from a continuation or continuance of a first reading of an ordinance, because we don't have a draft ordinance at this point. And I'm looking at Director Turner to see if she's amenable.
I concur.
Supervisor Sabatia?
And I just want to check in with Director Turner. If I heard you correctly, you said you would bring back the ordinance. Is it still planning to go through the Planning Commission first, as we had suggested?
Yes, and by the Ag Advisory Board as well, too.
Just wanted to make sure.
All right. I did open it for public comment.
I have a comment.
Go ahead Supervisor Owen.
The roads, I know we were supposed to bring to the Ag Advisory, and so I was kind of hoping to get that kind of knocked out pretty soon. Is that possible? It's been canceled twice.
The, it was canceled twice due to the cannabis ordinance. However, we are having the meeting that the board directed us to have with the Fire Chiefs, Farm Bureau, probably not the Ag Commissioner, this Wednesday. They just added it to the Fire Chiefs Association Agenda. And so, given after the direction or input from that group or that meeting, this Wednesday, I did forward you that invite.
Yes.
Then we'll start working on that draft ordinance.
And I think we misunderstood, we had a discrepancy on what we actually had asked for from the, for the roads on the board.
This was the agricultural road standards.
For cannabis.
That's not part of today's agenda.
So, yeah, if you-
But I'd be happy to follow up with Supervisor Owen on that.
Yeah, I had thought we had instructed it to come before the Ag Advisory.
Then I rewatched the video, and I had staff rewatch the video. The meeting that we requested was approved by the board, but the road standards will, when it's in draft ordinance form, will definitely go before the Ag Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I open it up for public already? All right, and now, so do we have to set the date time certain, or continuance to?
If it's okay, we'd actually prefer to renotice, just so we have the most coverage out there in the public.
And that can be done via direction to staff.
All right, so we'll just give direction to staff to do so. Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Is there a way to maybe put a, because we've been waiting for this for quite some time, is there a way to put a limitation of no more than 90 days, 60 days, something of the kind?
I'm aiming for January.
So 60 days?
60 days. How do you guys feel about 60 days?
If she's, you're comfortable with it.
Certainly.
So that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we need a motion on that?
No.
You have it? Okay.
No, I think we have direction.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll close 6.5 and move on to 6.6. Sitting as the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershare Protection District, accepts staff presentation on water quality and Clear Lake outreach perspectives, project updates, Water Resources Director, Pawanu Padhyay.
Hello, everyone. It's Pawanu Padhyay, Lake County Water Resource Director. So today we have a presentation here, and we have a consultant joining us for that. So just a brief history about this project. So we got this grant from Blue Ribbon Committee for, to conduct a comprehensive outreach assessment in 2022. The purpose of this effort was to evaluate public perception, awareness, and knowledge gaps related to water quality in Clear Lake, with the goal of transferring future education outreach and scientific communication efforts across local communities. Following the county's procurement policies, we put out a RFP to get a consultant working on this, and then we received a successful board from SCI, and I believe they were the only one we received a proposal from, and they were selected to conduct this outreach study. And now they have concluded their results for the public perception survey, which I think, if you guys recall, like, there was a survey which went out earlier this year. So this gonna be, this presentation gonna be presenting the results for that. And staff is requesting the board to accept this presentation. And then I will hand it over to Chris, and he can present on the findings there.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Pawan. It's good to be here. I'm Chris Coulter with SCI Consulting Group. We've been working on this project for a little over a year. So we do have a presentation, and, let's see, I can, I can share that presentation. Okay, so to, today, we're just going to talk about the results of our, of our work to date. So we'll, we'll explain a summary of our focus group work and the mailed survey that went out this summer. And then the next, the last part of this presentation will be the findings and our recommended next steps for this project. So the real goal of this particular phase of work was to engage the public and learn, learn about the, the public perceptions of water quality in Clear Lake region and in Lake County. The goal really is to learn what the public knows and what they believe, and this information that we collect in this phase of the work will shape the subsequent parts of the project work, which we'll explain. But the real goal of this is to explore water quality and stormwater funding options. So the first part of this is to engage the public and learn what, what kind of knowledge gaps exist, and what people already know, and what is important to them. So the outreach perspective work in 2024, we have a number of focus groups with a number of diverse groups, the Socioeconomic Subcommittee, the Clean Water Management Council, and we also held some focus group work at the Clear Lake Science Symposium over the summer. Later in May of 2025, in the summer, a survey was mailed out to about 7,000 property owners, and property owners received a physical copy in the mail and were asked to indicate their level of support for a potential fee or assessment to support stormwater and clean water activities in the county. And then today, we'll, we'll give you the results of that work. So in our focus group work, namely, the first goal was to learn about what, what folks believe is happening in Clear Lake regarding water quality and, and what causes exist, what impacts are creating issues with, with the, with the water quality in the lake and stormwater issues. And so, so we've got a number of responses, and, and I'll show you that the question that we asked is really the main goal of this slide. The question was asked, what do you believe is the most influential driver of water quality in Clear Lake? So we got a number of responses, but what we learned really essentially is that, that people believe that it's human, there's human impacts largely. The number of responses that we see was somewhat broad, and we attempted to combine them into groups, but really the largest, the most common response was that humans are driving water quality issues, and those types of things, such as, there's a perception that, that there's, there's runoff issues going into the lake and septic systems. We've heard a lot about illegal dumping, and on the other side, you know, there's a substantial amount of people that- a substantial amount of people that also accept that there's natural factors that contribute to the water quality in the lake. So a really good, a really good sample of folks who are pretty well informed was also one of the, one of the takeaways from, from the focus group work. We also asked a question about what people's perception.
Quick, you know, we have quite a bit of slides left. We have quite a robust agenda, so if you could summarize.
Yeah, so, so we also learned that a lot of folks in, in the region believe that Clear Lake was a lot cleaner 200 years ago. And that's important because it believes, it ties into the human cost of this issue. So this is the mailed survey that went out, but right now I'm gonna give you the results of that mailed survey. So. In our mailed survey, which incorporated a lot of the findings from our focus groups, we asked folks.
Chris, just a quick, I think we are not able to see your slide. I don't know, maybe you want to stop sharing and share again?
Oh, yeah. Are you able to see?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. So, so our mailed survey, 7,100 surveys were mailed. There was a question that asked folks, would you support, would you support a fee or an assessment on your property tax to, to fund clean water activities and improve water quality and improve stormwater management in Lake County? Our survey tested two rates. We tested a lower rate and a higher rate. We tested a $9.75 rate for a single family home and we also tested a $22.50 rate. The corresponding revenue, the totals that those bring in are $500,000 annually for the lower rate, $9.75, or 22, or 1.15 million for the $22.50 rate. Now that's for a single family home, typical single family home. This, this, the results that you see here, we're looking at a 50% threshold majority for approval. So the lower rate received 62.5%. The higher rate was also very close to that at 59.8, just under 60%. So, so we got a, a positive result from the survey in terms of the threshold being 50%. The result was that, that there is support for, for this kind of funding measure from property owners. So that is some good news and we can look a little bit more in detail at the actual results. This graph really just shows, you know, the, the survey asked how, you know, definitely yes, and four different types of responses, probably yes, probably no or definitely no. So we saw the, the, the most common response was the definitely yes, which is very strong and indicates that there's a lot of, a lot of actual momentum and support for, for this. We sometimes see like a, a larger amount of probablys than definitelys. But in this case, there's a strong amount of definitely yes. This is an important issue for, for folks as we like to make takeaway. And, and again, the, the survey did have a 3.4% margin of error, which is right where we're hoping for. And, and these results actually speak to, you know, that 50% threshold being still outside of the range of the margin of error. So that's also good. The survey asked a number of follow-up questions and what we really learned again was that this is an important issue. People are really concerned about water quality in Clear Lake. These, these questions really drill down on our future work, which would look at outreach and trying to inform folks about water quality. And so these sub-questions will actually shape our, our future work. But what we saw is that most of the questions polled really high in, in terms of human actions. These types, people are responding to proposals that, that indicate like work like funding trash capture, pollution removal and water quality. So our real takeaways from the two types of outreach that we've done to date with the survey and the focus groups is that runoff and septic system is important to people. People think that that is, is one of the causes and one of the solutions. And we also saw that funding for maintaining drainage systems is also really highly connected to folks' support for this type of work. And, and so what we've done really with this phase of work is set the groundwork for potential outreach themes and messaging for a potential, you know, in the future, if there is a ballot measure, that this type of, the, the messaging that focuses on human cause for water quality is really one of the focuses. And we want to message, we want to emphasize practical, visible outcomes and actual work that, that can impact less flooding, cleaner water, safer recreation. And we don't really want to talk about abstract ideas. We want to talk about physical, physical work. And again, septic issues are also one of the hot points, so that's definitely gonna be included in any future messaging. So in terms of the next steps, this project includes a feasibility analysis, which explains all the different type of revenue options available. What we've, what we essentially would be starting is a feasibility study that focuses on a property-related fee at a, at a $22.50 assessment level. And the, the subsequent steps on that, after that, there would be a, a potential future implementation of a funding source and that would be an optional step. So with that, we have a little bit of time for some questions, so happy to.
Go ahead Supervisor Owen.
Yeah, I think it's page 11. It says mailed in survey, write in comments. And on that particular page, property owners against the assessments, it was 67 that wrote taxes and assessments are already too high with a total of 166 people against it. And then the property owners in favor of the assessments, there was different aspects under that, but the total number was 140.
Yes, thank you for your question and I hope you can see the screen that's up now. Yes, so when we mailed the survey, there's a write-in field. We had six, we had 166 total negative comments and 140 positive write-in comments. So, so those are, those are noted. We, these are typical responses. You know, a lot of times people say that, that we already pay enough in taxes, so that's always the most popular response.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, just a quick question. You submitted a, or you sent out 7,100 surveys, only received 809 responses. Do you have like a, a mapping of who responded? Because I'm going to make an assumption that the 7,100 was kind of a cross-section of the community, so it would kind of go everywhere. But the 809 could be very specific locations such as are they from, are the responses from wealthier areas? So that when we try to look at this as a county-wide potential question, that yes, we might get those that have disposable income saying yes, but those that don't, maybe they didn't respond and they would struggle more to say yes. So just kind of curious if there was a mapping of where the responses came from?
That's a great question Supervisor. Yes, we do have that, these, these, there's a map of the, all the location of where these folks live and demographically, we, we have everything tied up and, and that information will be super key to, to look more into outreach efforts as it moves on. We certainly understand that this type of measure, there's challenges in Lake County. You know, we have positive survey results, but you know, there, there's, there needs to be a sustained informational effort and, and those, you know, there's lots of data points in terms of who's, who responded and who didn't respond.
That information would be great.
All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Betsy, if you can unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did submit a letter yesterday to all of the supervisors and I did not have a email address for the consultant, but I would like to correspond with the consultant. I would like to see all of those data points. I would like to see all of the actual information that was put together and I would also like to see how the questions were created based upon your knowledge of the existing multimillion-dollar funded programs. I made suggestions specifically to the supervisors because of our more than 30 years of millions of dollars of investments in these programs. I appreciate the fact that in the last three or four years, the Department of Water Resources has created a very, very effective outreach project. I hope the funding that you have will continue that project because that's what's the basis of your knowledge in the public. But I think Bruno's question is very valid. Where did those answers come from? And how were they, how were they asked these questions? I have not seen the survey. I would like to actually see the survey and see what, what was asked and that kind of thing. So I'd appreciate having that information. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? All right, closed public comment and bring it back to the board. And I think it's just accept the presentation, so. Supervisor Sabatier.
And what I appreciate is we're, we have finite amount of funding when it comes to water resources and Clear Lake is something we need to manage and take care of. Luckily, we have good partners that help us with that as well. I'm not against the concept of looking at where other revenues could come from, such as potentially some kind of tax measure that goes on the ballot. But I would much prefer going after a specific tax than a general tax, just because that holds us accountable for future generations rather than just the people who have good intentions and know what they were asking. And so having it not reach that two-thirds status kind of limits my approach of maybe now's not right, the right time and maybe there's other opportunities and continue to work with our partners to see how we can best extend those dollars to make sure that we are treating our lake in the appropriate way and making progress. But just wanted to at least make those points.
Supervisor Owen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just for purposes of the recommended action, the staff is requesting that your board, by, essentially by motion, accept the staff presentation on the, on water quality in Clear Lake outreach perspective, project updates.
Second.
Oop, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. 6.7, consideration of expanded use of previously approved stormwater matching funds, file number 22-402, to support groundwater management activities under SGMA. And B, accept staff presentation on the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee GSPAC update. All right. And this was our 11:15, we're at 11:30 and we'll go ahead and continue.
Hello, everyone. It's Pawanu Padhyay, Lake County Water Resource Director, and I have with me here.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Todd Abbott. I'm, this is my first time addressing the board and it's a real honor today.
Get the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better here? Did we get the presentation up?
So just to give a brief overview about this agenda item. So what we are asking board here is like, in the past, I believe 2023, the board has allocated a certain fund for the stormwater management and that's, that's a matching fund for, of $100,000 over five years. So $100,000 for each year, $500,000 in total. And that is supposed to cover our overhead thing, which is not covered, generally not covered by grants. We have received a total of, at this point, from the last approval is about $1.6 million. That includes a host of things, which some of the items were in that previous presentation as well, like the trash cleanup or updating our plants so that it's good to, ready to go projects to apply for the further grants. Flooding and planning the, planning of some of the projects to, to make it ready for next steps. So what we are asking board on this item is to expand the use of that $500,000 to include, so we can use those funds for groundwater as well. And that's primary because we have been using our internal department fund to address some of the stormwater matching requirement, which is needed for the grants. So yeah, I think I will pass it to Todd and he can give a overview and go to the presentation.
All right, good morning, everyone. It's a real honor to address the board today. It's my first address. My name is Todd Abbott and I'm a Water Resources Program Coordinator for Lake County in charge of groundwater and lake bed management. Today I'll provide you with a very brief update of where Lake County's groundwater management program stands and then I'll turn it over to my director, Pawan, for a discussion about funding. As you likely know, SIGMA stands for Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. It passed the California State Legislature in 2014 and requires local management of the county's groundwater to prevent overdraft and to ensure long-term sustainability of the resource. The passage of the legislation mandated the formation of groundwater sustainable agencies or GSAs and to develop and implement groundwater sustainability plans, GSPs, for high and medium priority basins with the goal of reaching basin sustainability by 2042. The Big Valley Basin is ranked as a medium priority basin and is therefore subject to SIGMA requirements. It's very important to note that basins with a medium or high ranking are required to meet SIGMA requirements and if we fail to do so, Lake County loses control of our groundwater management to the state. So every effort must be made to maintain compliance with SIGMA. Okay, this next slide here is a map of the groundwater basins within the county. There's a total of seven major groundwater basins in the county. Big Wa, Big Valley is the largest of the seven and is the only basin within Lake County to be subjected, subject to SIGMA. Scotts Valley Basin is also obviously very important and in part because of its connection to the Big Valley aquifer or basin and for the irrigation it provides for agricultural interests across Scotts Valley. But the Department of Water Resources classified it as a low priority basin and therefore is not subject to SIGMA requirements like Big Valley. This next slide here is a geographical boundary map of Big Valley Basin. The basin provides domestic and agricultural water for thousands of residents as well as environmental, habitat and recreational beneficial uses across the valley. It has been some time since Water Resource has provided an extended update on groundwater conditions within Big Valley and I would be glad to come back and provide that update. Today, with respect for time, I will streamline the conversation and focus on the progress we've made as a county in implementing SIGMA within Big Valley Basin. Okay, this next slide here is the Lake County SIGMA progress. As I stated in 2014, California passed SIGMA. In 2021, Lake County Water Resources Department received just over a $1.3 million SIGMA implementation grant from the Department of Water Resources, in particular to develop the formation of the Big Valley GSA and GSP. The grant also provided for consulting services, meetings and other resources to enable the formation of the GSA and to develop a strategy designed to ensure the Big Valley Basin reaches sustainability by the 2042 benchmark. In 2022, Water Resources submitted the Big Valley GSP to DWR for approval and in April of 2023, DWR approved the report. Between 2021 and 2024, Lake County Water Resources has continued to submit annual GSP reports to DWR with each report being approved to date. The 2025 GSP report will be submitted in early '26. And after the 2025 annual report, Water Resources will be required to produce a periodic evaluation for 2026, which I'll speak to in just a moment. This next slide is the requirements to be compliant with SIGMA. To restate, we must submit an annual groundwater report that provides year-to-year. To restate, we must submit an annual groundwater report that provides year-to-year updates on groundwater conditions across the valley, and we also must submit a periodic evaluation every five years. The periodic evaluation is an expanded and more comprehensive report of groundwater conditions within the basin, and this is the first periodic evaluation Lake County will produce. The twenty twenty-six periodic evaluation is due January twenty twenty-seven. We'll go quickly to the cost to implement SIGMA. This chart essentially outlines the myriad responsibilities that DWR outlines for the administrative, regulatory, and project costs associated with SIGMA that must be funded. From general it what's important here to know is that from general and operational needs to report production and well monitoring, implementing SIGMA is a multi-pronged endeavor and is required resources from a range of places. This next slide is the cost to implement it continued. To date, we have used a variety of funding options to cover groundwater management costs, but these resources are limited and unable to cover all of our management expenses. Grants we've applied for, our initial one point three million dollar grant, provided the resources to create the GSA, the GSP, and establish our program and management actions. In late twenty twenty-two, Water Resources applied for the second round of funding through DWR, but the process was very competitive, and we did not receive the grant. Along with the approximate one point three million dollar implementation grant from twenty twenty-one, DWR has also provided funding for two monitoring wells within Big Valley and for contractor and consultant services to help establish our GSPAC advisory group and in shaping our GSP. Water Resources has utilized internal funding to bridge the funding gap, but resources are limited, and the department cannot provide for the breadth of actions required by SIGMA. It's the lack of consistent predictable funding is what we need to establish long-term. Excuse me. The lack of consistent predictable funding is why we need to establish a long-term funding channel to cover SIGMA expenses going forward. I'll now turn it over to my director, Pawan, who will discuss our immediate funding needs.
So, yeah, as as you saw like in earlier slide, that there is like a cost to implement this groundwater sustainability agency, which which the Board of Director also serves as Board of Board of Supervisor also serves as the Board of Directors for the GSA. So the cost to implement is for the annual report, it costs about eighty thousand as of twenty twenty-five annually. And it gets down to about forty thousand if we have like our internal staff work on that. But some of the tasks required in the annual report, like the running of the models and scenarios, those are something that need to be done by a consultant. And then there is a periodic evaluation, which is more comprehensive. So the cost of that with our internal staff support is about two hundred K. Or if we divide that over five years, would be like forty K annually. And as mentioned, that there is a need, because this is the cost like which was doesn't come with like setting up a SIGMA and plan and updating these things. So we need to there is also a need to do a long-term study, which can establish our funding sustained funding mechanism. And at this time, I think the cost for that, we are approximating about hundred K. So in summary, like immediate funding need is an annual report. So that is at a bare minimum, we need about forty K for the annual report, and then five-year periodic evaluation would be at two hundred thousand, and then funding feasibility study is hundred thousand. So total approximately about three hundred forty thousand is what we need by twenty twenty-seven. And so that's that's where we figured out, like we looked into our funding or our internal budget and see like where we can come up with those. So one of the option which we have or which we figured it out might be workable is so we already have a five hundred thousand which the board allocated us for the stormwater projects as an matching fund for other grants, which we can utilize as our overhead cost. So at this point, only we have used only fifty thousand, and the reason for that is because we have been using our internal funds and grant funds to cover that. So we have about four hundred fifty thousand, which we have not utilized at this point. And in order to so if we expand, so the request here you can see is like to expand the use of that four hundred fifty thousand remaining to also include the cost for the groundwater management. So we can depending on whether it's needed for stormwater or groundwater, we can dip into that and utilize as needed. And the and that's just to cover the immediate funding need, but because as you know, the the whole thing gonna go to like twenty forty-two, where the basin becomes sustainable in itself. So there is an annual reporting and every five year, which would be like another three comprehensive update would be needed by twenty forty-two. So for that, we have a so we need to establish separate mechanisms because this four hundred fifty K we have would be exhausted at this point by twenty twenty-seven. So for the long term, it's the same thing, like the annual report, which will cost forty K, and that's based on our twenty twenty-five cost. And the periodic evaluation is two hundred K over five years or forty K average out about forty K per year. So we have a need of about eighty to hundred K if we add just for inflation. And for this, like we have like a suggested or like something as a starting point is by twenty twenty-seven rolls in, we need to have this annual or like this funding mechanism established. So as an option, option one, we can have like either county provide these hundred percent of the annual needs, which can be provided to us as a Department of Water Resources, and we can use that to cover that cost. Or county can provide fifty percent of it, which would be fifty thousand per year, and then balance would be through a fee mechanism, like a Prop two eighteen or similar measure. Or the third option would be like hundred percent of this need to be met by a fee mechanism on its own, which is again, we are two eighteen, but to generate a revenue of hundred thousand. And while these are an option, I mean, we will still continue to work or apply for grants and come up with the funds like as needed. But as you heard from Todd earlier, that we applied for the second round of funding, but that was not successful because the state gonna give it to only because we received in the first round. And there are lot of factor which work in a grant. It's not a given that we're gonna get it. But because it's a long-term thing, us running up to like twenty forty, forty-two. So I think in long run, we do need like some support so we can sustain all these activities.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So ju- just to make sure I'm clear and appreciate the clarification that the money is not if taken away that was made for the matching of the grants. You've been using other resources as the matching portion, so taking it away will not have any impact, negative impact on current grants that you have. Here, you're saying a hundred thousand dollars per year. Does that mean the four hundred thousand would help you give at least four years with potential grants in between that you can receive or any other of the other options that we may go after? But would that be appropriate to say that if four hundred thousand was used from what was made for the matching fund? Utilize for this, that it would give you four years?
So right now, we are asking to expand the use of the remaining four hundred fifty K. So we are not using whole four hundred fifty K for groundwater. We will still use it for stormwater on as at need basis. So maybe we utilize about three hundred to three hundred fifty for groundwater, and the remaining will still be used as a stormwater overhead.
So you would have like one year's worth of groundwater stuff while the rest gets used for stormwater.
This will cover up to twenty twenty-seven because the next periodic evaluation is due in twenty twenty-seven. So this will run us to twenty twenty-seven, and by twenty twenty-eight comes in, we need to have some other funding, either a grant or two eighteen or like some county funds.
And do you know if the state will offer similar grants as the first one that we did receive for groundwater and the second one we did not receive? Will there be new iterations of those grants?
I think there will be.
Okay.
Yeah. But but it's we will definitely apply for it, but whether we get it or not, that's another question.
And I don't mind doing a year-to-year and just saying, let's cover for this at this moment in time. I'd hate to know what SIGMA looks like if you don't meet their requirements.
Supervisor.
So just so I'm understanding right, the the five hundred thousand, that was a one-time amount of money that was provided, so it's it's not something that's gonna be renewed, right?
Yes.
So once that's gone, it's gone.
Yeah. So that was for hundred thousand each year for five years, and that was on a rollover basis. So whatever we have not utilized gonna roll over till twenty twenty-seven. So at this point, we have only used fifty thousand, so four hundred fifty is still there for us to use.
Okay, my I'm not necessarily concerned with providing the assistance. Right now, with that money available, just concerned about the future and especially if we're gonna look at fee mechanisms, which I assume would be charging people for the use of their groundwater. Is that correct?
Yeah, in some way or form, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Supervisor Owen, and then Supervisor.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for looking to the future and be looking that far down the road. So I appreciate that. I am not for tapping people for their 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 own wells. I'm not I'm against that. But I I am in support of supporting you now, and I appreciate the fact that you're looking that far down the road. So thank you.
Supervisor.
Yeah, I mean, I've been got it's pretty obvious we need to keep funding this because we don't want a state takeover, and that's what happens if we don't comply. This is again, little bit of an unfunded mandate here because we've got to do this for the state, and we're not getting supported. So hopefully, that will change in their grants, and maybe that's something that we can advocate for because this is gonna be an ongoing financial need for the next twenty years. So, yep, I'm in support of of moving this forward. Thank you for being creative. We have to do what it takes to make sure that we maintain control of that basin.
Open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers?
Good morning, Board. Margot Cambara. The attention to groundwater security is important, and thank you, Board, and thank you, Water Resources, for for doing that. I I want to sound a note of optimism. I am very encouraged by the energy enthusiasm that Coordinator Abbott shows for his duties on groundwater. He takes it very seriously, and I look forward to continuing to participate in the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee meetings. And so, again, thank you, Board, for, you know, taking the time to consider this important topic.
Thank you. Any on Zoom? Land Trust, Lake County Land Trust, please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Board. My name is Angela De Palma Dow. I'm zooming in from the Lake County Land Trust. I'm Executive Director. We also serve I serve as a seat on the GSPAC Committee for Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Planning, and we also have property in Big Valley for the land trust and then also me personally. I just I I very much appreciate being able to maximize maximize funds across the board. I think it I I brought this up as these stormwater funds as being available as an option for helping support some groundwater actions at one of our GSPAC meetings. I do want to bring to attention the process, however, because the stormwater match funds were agreed upon by the Clean Water Program. So actually, the Clean Water Program, which has seats from both county, the district, and both cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake, have oversight over the Blue Ribbon Committee grants that were approved. So when we proposed to the Blue Ribbon Committee about that project and about those grant commitment funds, it was with approval and support by the Clean Water Committee, Clean Water Program Committee to provide oversight and be supportive of all the projects that those funds generated. So I think requests should have gone to that program first for use of those match funds. And I see you guys have a meeting according to Agenda Center on the twentieth, but I don't see that item on there. Also, because it is a Blue Ribbon Committee grant, which those grants were again approved by the sixteen-member Blue Ribbon Committee with those funds committed for stormwater match, stormwater program match, I do not believe this request was presented to the Blue Ribbon Committee, at least not in any of the technical committees, which I am both said in both the socio-economic and the technical subcommittee. So I just think there needs to be a different order of the process. So maybe approve, I think Supervisor Sabatier mentioned approving this year's, you know, some some of the funds allotted to meet the SIGMA requirements for this year, but then go back to those committees and let them know that you are using those funds in a different way. And I would also recommend that you revisit the list of the use of those match funds from the May tenth, twenty twenty-two board item, which indicated the use of those funds. And there's a list there, and there could be some way in there you could include some groundwater projects because groundwater and surface water as stormwater runoff are related and interconnected. So I would just suggest that I that should be revisited and should have been part of this presentation to provide the full story about what those funds were supposed to be used for. Lastly, I'm really sorry, thank you, is that I believe the county is at fifty percent compliance for stormwater requirements. And so although these are both unfunded mandate projects, it's kind of rerouting much-needed funds from one program to another program, and you want to make sure that there's balance, that you're meeting the requirements of both without, you know, stealing Peter to pay Paul kind of thing. And the stormwater program is really important and requires protection of the resource, both on the surface and in the groundwater. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Betsy Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Pawan and Mr. Abbott. And I appreciate Angela's comments. I really am concerned about the fact that only fifty thousand dollars have been spent of the funds that you want to move from stormwater projects. I'm very concerned about those projects that are not being done, and I think that should be part of the consideration of your decision. Also, I just want to mention that the map that was shown early in the presentation, there was a map that included the area of the city of Lakeport, North Lakeport, Scotts Valley, contiguous with Big Valley as a groundwater source. I do not know the status of those testing programs that were going to be done, the LiDAR measurements of mag and monitoring wells on the what is believed to be the border between the Big Valley Basin and the Scotts Valley Basin. But I think it's important not to not to convey through misdirection that there is a known connection between those two basins. If there is, we need to have even greater protection. And finally, it is your job to do that. It is within your purview to do that. It's not something that we should resent doing. It's something that we should we should be really caring about in terms of our county resources. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, I'll close public comment. Go ahead.
I would like to respond briefly that so the remaining funds is not there because we have not been doing the work. It's because we have been using some other source of funding. So as I said earlier, like we have been using our internal match, and that's the reason why the fund has been not utilized as much as initially expected. So the work is getting done on both front, like the groundwater as well as the stormwater.
All right. All right. With that.
I'll make a motion to approve expanded use of previously approved stormwater matching funds, file number twenty-two four oh two, to support groundwater management activities under SIGMA as the first part of the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero, and then I think it's.
There's a B, motion to accept staff presentation on the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee GSPAC update.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, there we go.
Thank you.
Move on to our six point eight, public hearing, consideration of draft ordinance amending Chapter twenty-one, Articles eleven and twelve, the County Zoning Code, to implement general plan housing element policy HE fifty-eight pertaining to affordable housing. Community Development Director, Maria Turner.
Good morning, almost afternoon. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. The item you have before you today is a draft ordinance implementing one housing element action from the two thousand nineteen sixth. action from the 2019 Sixth Cycle Housing Element. The Housing Element is a chapter of the general plan. It's updated about every seven years. It identifies obstacles and challenges, and then also includes corresponding actions to encourage housing development in the unincorporated areas of the county. This Sixth Cycle Housing Element started in 2019 and ends in 2027. We are already in preparation for the Seventh Cycle Housing Element, working with the Lake APC and the other jurisdictions to finalize our RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, numbers. And so we are looking forward to jumping into that update process later. There were six actions from the Sixth Cycle or Current Housing Element that the State Department of Housing and Community Development is particularly interested in us accomplishing prior to our next cycle. Those six actions are an establishment of a policy as well as a few amendments to our zoning code to be done. And that project was with one of our senior planners who's now on long-term leave. So it's been picked up by myself and another senior planner. And we have had ongoing communications with HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development. They requested that we break this update or accomplishing these six housing element implementation tasks, break them up. Because this one that's before you today was of top priority, so we split it. So today you have HE 58. The other five or six implementation asks are in final review, forwarded to County Council just today. So we're working on bringing those to you at a future meeting, very close future meeting. But since HE 58 was requested by the state to move forward in an expedited timeline, that's why it's before you today. At their last meeting, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval for the consideration of this draft ordinance by the board. HE 58 adds a sentence to Articles 11 and 12, which are two-family residential and multifamily residential of the zoning code. It allows for use by right for multifamily residential development for affordable housing under certain criteria. And those criteria are, one, that the site has been located, has been identified as a potential affordable housing site in the last two cycles. So the last 14 years are two housing elements as potential affordable housing site. Or it is within the high-density zoning. So that would be the multifamily residential zoning. Or possibly R2, the two-family residential zoning, depending on the size of the development, the purpose of which is to lower the governmental obstacle of requiring a conditional use permit for multifamily residential housing. So in order to accomplish this housing element implementation action, which was already, when the housing element came before the Planning Commission, it was included in that. It was approved by the board. It was approved and certified by the state. So in order to accomplish this, that, in order to amend the zoning code, we do so via ordinance. And that's what you have before you today, is to add that sentence to both Article 11 and 12.
Supervisor Sabatier, did you have your pen up?
Yeah, I'm just, is this legislation that created that everybody has to pass HE 58? Like how does HCD approach us with this request? It's based on everybody is getting this request?
I don't think it's an everybody request. HCD is very hands-on regarding each jurisdiction's housing element. And some of them do, some of the actions that are included are legislatively done or happen at the state level, like with our ADU or accessory dwelling unit policies and zones. I am not aware that this one is. I think it was identified as something that was missing from our ordinance that could enable or support and encourage multifamily residential housing.
My only reservation is just, it fits where it fits. It doesn't just fit anywhere. I'd love to get a map from you on where would this be allowed as a by-right type of project so that we get a better understanding of where these things may pop up? Because it's hard to identify how many have been in the cycle two times, what's the right zone, so that we can get an idea of what communities may be impacted? Because these projects do pop up and you get no choice at that point. And so it would just be nice to be able to get a map to understand where the potential projects could align.
I would be happy to follow up and send the board an email that identifies that in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would recommend we don't wait to implement this action since the state is waiting to hear that we are accomplishing some of the actions that we said we were going to do already in the 2019 housing element.
All right. Any other questions? Open it up for public comment.
Good afternoon, Board. Margot Cambara. A question and a request. The additional information that Supervisor Sabatier requested, the map showing where this proposal will be implemented by right, that would be very helpful for the public to know as well. So my question is, will that be posted with the other materials for this agenda item on Granicus? That, yeah, that would be very helpful information. So any arrangements to share that that information with the public would be appreciated. Thank you.
Now that I've had a moment to think about it as well, I think we can, it would be fine to post it up on our website. That way, all the public has the same access to it.
Is there any other public comment on, I'll close public comment. I do like that, and also we can have it for the next agenda item or a link in the next memo when we read it again or something like that.
Yeah, I can add that to that memo. That's a great idea.
There's nothing else?
I feel like I don't have much of a choice here.
There's a little less discussion usually when you've already seen the housing element. The board has approved it. It goes to the state. The state has said, yep, this meets the requirements, and now we're just getting it done.
Yeah, and we'd have to change zoning and everything, and that's not gonna happen overnight.
Yeah. But, I mean, these locations are already designated on the current map.
There are, I have not identified which parcels are relevant. I'd have to go back through the last 14 years or two cycles of housing elements to find those. But we're happy to update that.
Yeah, but we do have potential sites mapped already.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you saw a number of those in the Hape as well.
Okay, I will move that we approve the reading of the ordinance in title only and advance the ordinance to the next available board for adoption.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Apologize. Typically, your board, thank you, Mr. Chair, your board would have two separate motions. One would be reading it in title, first reading of the ordinance. The first motion would be to approve the first reading of the ordinance to be read in title only.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
All right, an ordinance amending Chapter 21, Articles 11 and 12, of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance to implement General Plan Housing Element Policy, HE-58 pertaining to affordable housing.
All right.
The second motion would be to approve the draft, that the draft ordinance be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption. And just for confirmation, that dated, the date of that meeting would be December 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Second?
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll see this December 9th, and we'll go from there. With that, we are done with our timed items to that next point at 1 o'clock, which will be back 1:05 from our lunch break that will take, starting right now. Poor Lloyd.